But before we start, last night, we, I briefly stated it didn't seem appropriate to wait till other items since posting. And I want to bring up again that to acknowledge the suffering that is happening in our community, in our country regarding the black and brown communities. And I suppose I'm starting to do or have been doing some self-reflection as a mother, a school committee member. And Jeff, I want to thank you for your blog post. You know, I thought that was very beautifully done. And I'd like to hear at some point, and maybe we can at every meeting perhaps, really kind of start, starting the conversations regarding, you know, what's happening in our schools? I know you said that 20 teachers are doing a cultural proficient teaching course. And really finding out what's really happening in the classrooms at each level, at each school. At the beginning of the year, I remember Carrie Cowell spoke so beautifully. She came to one of our meetings and passionately spoke about how, because we have a homogeneous community, how do we bring empathy? Because it's all, you know, a lot of it is just acquiring that empathy for the other. And how books are a big part of that. So I appreciated that presentation of hers. But I'm hoping that we can just kind of dive deeper and continue the conversation.
Absolutely. I think, you know, when I put out my blog post, I was trying to, you know, communicate a message through a story instead of, you know, just doing the kind of run of the mill that we've seen hundreds of times in the last week or so. And just really communicate a way that I think everyone has to go through that process of self-reflection. I'm not sure it ever ends. You just keep going through it. And really wanted to communicate that, you know, mine started really in 2004 and 2005 and 2006 and 2007, when I was doing my grad work and did a lot of work on social justice. And it really, you know, it makes you think about things that you never have before. And look at issues and things that you never would look at. You don't look at the same way ever again, you know? And I think that communicating those types of things through stories is very powerful. And being able to share your own experiences is something that I felt that was, it was something that I needed to do in that blog post. So I appreciate the feedback on that. But I know we're heading in the right direction, but we can always do better. There's no doubt about it.
Do you know when that course is done for those teachers by any chance?
It just finished this week.
Okay.
So there's some incredible final projects that they did that Carrie had shared with me. So I think that might be a good way to start this is have the teachers, either teachers themselves, or maybe Carrie or Zach come in and do some of the sharing of the work that they did in that course. So I only got to see a couple of them, but they were excellent.
No, that would be great if we could do that for the next meeting, if we can, now that the course is done. Okay, so at this point, we are going to take public input. And I'll read the statement regarding public input. Citizens at this time may address the committee on items of school business not on the agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action at the meeting during which the item is presented. So if folks have any public input, if you could please write your question in the Q and A section at the bottom of your screen. That would be most helpful. But I'd also like to let people know that we'll take comments during the budget conversation. I think that's important to allow people to comment then and to ask more questions. So at this time, let me see, I think there's one question in there.
I think I actually answered it in that the attendee wanted to know if we could see their, them on video.
Oh, okay.
And I assure you that is not the case. And then another person, I think who's not a panelist, mentioned that it was only if they got promoted to presenting. So I don't, I don't think that that's the indication for tonight that we'll be doing that from the, you know, random, like from an attendees list.
Okay, alrighty.
I also wonder, Anne Mae, I know that typing and these things can take a while. If people would be interested in asking some of the questions they had, let's just think about this, for the budget section, if they wanted to put them in and then simply say parking lot, or please pin this for the budget discussion? Because otherwise, I'm concerned that we're going to get 50 Q and As all at once. It could kind of make things technically very difficult for people to answer those. Do we generally feel okay about that? Do we think that's an okay strategy?
I feel good about that.
Okay. Everybody else? We're good? Okay. I just wanted to kind of propose that because I, within the limitations of Zoom, I want to make sure that everybody gets what they want to ask regardless of typing speed, which.
Yeah. And I did get a fair amount of emails today, so I'm very grateful for that. So I've printed them out and I've got those ready to rock and roll as well. So, great. So at this point, we are going to look at the minutes from May 7th, 21st, and the executive session minutes for the 21st of May, Tim Knight.
Sure. I'm looking for approval for the minutes on, as you said, May 7th, 2020, and May 21st, 2020. And I believe for the executive session minutes on May 21st, I believe we would need to hold those. Is that right, Jeff?
Correct.
And then the May 21st regular public session as well.
Wonderful.
We would not hold those.
No.
I just want to clarify that, that when we hold executive session minutes, it's because those issues are still being discussed. And it could have, the reason that they were in executive session is still the reason we will hold them.
All right. Do we have a second?
All about the clarifying.
Thank you, Jess. No, I appreciate that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Megan Glenn. Thank you. Take a roll call vote. Jess Riley?
Aye.
Leo Brem?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
And Anne Mae O'Shea Brook?
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. New Business, Dr. Marsden, the new calendar for next year, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in your packet and materials that you got, it was the revised calendar for the 2021 school year. As you know, the Boston Marathon was canceled. And we had made September 14th a holiday as we were instructed or led to believe it was going to be. And now that has been canceled due to COVID-19. So I'd asked it to revote the 2021 calendar as it was originally presented prior to the declaration of the marathon being on September 14th.
May I please make a motion to approve that one?
No, you're very happy.
Second.
It makes me very.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Leo. All right. Jess Riley?
Aye.
Leo Brem?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Leo O'Shea Brook?
Aye.
So we have a new calendar for next.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. All right. Reopening of school update, please.
Sure. So I was a part of a Zoom meeting earlier this week with the Commissioner of Education. He's been meeting with us each week and giving us updates of what his expectations are going forward for the school reopening in September. I think, you know, we, I tried to send that, well, I sent that email last week home to parents just to let them know where we are and what we're doing as far as this particular issue. Not a heck of a lot of new news, except for the fact that he reiterated this time. So last week, the week before, he was talking a little more openly that we'd have a little more flexibility as a school district and as a community as we get closer to September. He reiterated his former percentage of 85 to 90% of what the guidance will be in June will be something that is mandated by the state in the Department of Public Health. So that we won't have as much flexibility as we think we may have. One of the things that he said is that the guidance, which is due to be out on June 15th, will operate on a continuum. So at one end of the continuum will be the color red, which means total remote. And on the other end of the continuum will be green, which means going back to school as normal. He feels like at this point that we will be somewhere in the middle of that. But he did open the door. He said they're having conversations at the state level. So that if you're a community that you feel like, if we're, if the state says you have to be somewhere in the middle, like a hybrid model, but you feel like the incidences of COVID-19 have been low in your community, that you can petition the state and try to get them to allow you to move to the right, so to speak, on the continuum to have regular school as we know it. So that's something we're going to be watching. You know, conversely, if you are a district that is a hybrid model because of what the state says, and you have a lot of COVID-19 cases, or you have a history of that, then you may want to back off that and go into a more remote. So that, to me, sounds like there could be some flexibility in that, in the guidance. But we were told again to really plan on the 90% of it being dictated by the state in the Department of Public Health. So that gets back to what we've talked about after a couple of meetings now, this COVID-19 committee. Christine Triawile and I had a conversation about it. We're going to wait a little bit to see what the guidance is and then start really getting into that in the middle to the end of June so that we can start those meetings. Because as we said before, the same folks are going to be on both committees if we did a separate school town one. So it made sense to combine those and then have a committee or subcommittee that just deals with schools. So it was a lot more promising than the last time we had a meeting. But as I've told you before, each week it changes. The commissioner gets more information. And Ed Davis, who is the former Police Commissioner of Boston, is now working as a consultant with DESI. And he has a company, I guess, that has an incredible group of folks working with him in the medical field, et cetera, that are going to be informing DESI on what they think we should be doing as school district. So he's been a part of our conversations the last two Zooms, and we have another one coming up next week. So again, stay tuned. He did say that June 15th would be the date that he is planning to release the guidance to all of us. So he typically gives us a heads up whenever anything comes out, whether it's, you know, the closure of school, like we've had a couple of times, he'll give us a couple hours heads up. So I'm assuming that if it's not the 15th, he'll let us know that. But stay tuned.
Alrighty. Leo, did you want to make your suggestion about once those DESI recommendations are?
Yeah, as many of us have been, you know, fielding questions about the reopening of school. You know, the administration is, you know, has full consideration of putting together a committee, you know, to help with the structure and planning of that as well. But I also think it'd be important for us to have some listening sessions for both primary and secondary schools. You know, after we've received that information, Dr. Marsden? Because I think that information will help us be able to get the reaction from the community better as well as that's shared, but then also listen to the concerns to take into consideration back to that committee. And if we're able to set up a couple of Zoom sessions, and I know the last thing we need is, the last thing we need is additional meetings. But I have no intention to go anywhere for some time. And the great thing about Zoom meetings is if you happen to be on vacation on the Cape or sheltering on the Cape somewhere or in the mountains, you can still attend with an internet connection. So I was just going to recommend that. So, and the reason for the two separate times is to, I think that, not to have one overpower the other in a conversation. Because I think there are unique concerns that would contribute to both elementary and secondary. And I just think being able to separate those out and have two separate times for that to happen. And maybe that appointed committee by that time would also be there for that listening session.
Yeah, it is a good suggestion. That's why I included that on the email last Friday. I think it's important that people know that we want to listen to what they have to say. And that, you're right, concerns are different K to five versus six through 12. And some may be the same, but there are definitely some unique concerns that younger parents may have for younger students than they have for older students. Right. Yeah, great suggestion.
Great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jess.
No, go ahead.
Yeah.
How comprehensive do you expect those to be? And more where I'm going is, obviously, there's going to be a weighing on the operational side. But will they also, you know, how much do you think they'll get into curriculum standards, et cetera?
Well, he, one thing he did mention on Tuesday was that they're going to be a lot more comprehensive than the guidance for remote learning. So I expect them to really look at it. I think in my email, I don't remember if I put it in, but, you know, the areas that they've talked about, that we talk about too, is the health and safety of students and staff being number one. That's the most important piece of this. And then getting into the academics, the building piece, and then transportation is a big issue. So what parents can expect is that I'll send it at some point, probably late June, early July, I'll be sending a survey out to all parents to let them know, just tell me about what your plans are. Do you plan on transporting your child to school? Or do you have your, or your child take the bus? Those kinds of questions, so we can get a better sense of what's out there with our planning. Because there may be parents that will choose to drive their children to school instead of having them ride the bus. And we need to make accommodations on transportation based on social distancing. So that'll be helpful for our planning as well. So we're going to do that to gather more data from parents. And certainly we'll get it from the listening sessions that Leo has suggested as well. But all that combined with the guidance will get us where we need to go for September.
Can I have one short comment about, when I hear that certain communities, local communities, can decide, you know, based with their Board of Health and on the science and where we see trends going? And I think that scientifically valid and up-to-date information is incredibly important in this. And not just kind of what we think might happen, but really the best that we can do. The other thing I think about it, and I'm going to say it, and I will probably say it for every other meeting we have from now on, is that I really have to think about the privilege that smaller communities with, with a workforce that can primarily work from home. And the privilege that it takes and the economic wealth, to some extent, and the socioeconomics that it takes to be able to say that your town has been exposed so much less than other towns. And that you and your kids get to go to school, but other kids don't. And that's just, that's the reality of the situation. But I think it's important that we check ourselves and kind of understand that that's the case.
Jess, that was a concept that they're talking about. It may not happen.
Yeah.
You know, for that very reason.
And it's an interesting construct, isn't it?
No doubt.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other items since posting on June 2nd?
None that I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. We'll move on to old business. Dale Street School?
Okay, so we have a lot there. Since our last meeting, the school building committee has had a meeting, which Anne Mae and Leo are members, and Michael was there, as well as Steve Brenham, had a meeting and looked at some of the feedback that we got from the survey. And we got great participation in that survey, that Anne Mae really led that effort with Tim. So we appreciate the two of you doing that. And, you know, start to take a look at what some of the feedback was, some of the concerns with residents. And, you know, we had a really good dialogue around what makes sense going forward. So I think, and please jump in at any point, anyone that was there. But I think that it was real strong consensus that it made sense for us to really take a look at, you know, the surroundings that we're in in terms of COVID-19, the economy, all of these things, and the feedback that we got, and really take a look at, maybe we should not be submitting our PSR in September. And we should look at delaying that for a month or two, or two months, actually. And just gather more information from parents, more information from the community, and really spend the time to educate folks and get people on board. So I think that was a, you know, a great suggestion that we all supported. And it doesn't impact the opening that much. It does adjust the timetable, but we're still looking at a September 2024 opening based on where we are right now. So I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything on that, but.
No, I was fully in favor with slowing things down a little bit to digest everything and really to engage the public. You know, the survey results came back with, you know, over 20% don't have enough information for grade configuration. Over 20% don't have enough information to, on the site location. So I think we've got some work to do in terms of educating and engaging the public. And I think this time also will hopefully allow us to get better numbers or more numbers, more concrete. So I think that would be helpful as well.
Just remind everyone too, because we have a good attendance tonight, that all the results can be found on our website. If you click on Explore, and there's Dale Street Project, you click on Dale Street Project. And on the left, it is right there. Click on that, and all the information, all the results are right there for you.
One thing I actually want to mention, two things. I think it's really important to people who are here to understand, to the town, to understand that this is actually a town project in which we have influence in terms of educational planning, in terms of, because we are seen as the experts around the educational part of this. But this is indeed a capital project from the town. And that the project managers are contracted by the town. And that as we go forward, I think so often people kind of look to the school committee and think, why don't we know more than this? Or why don't we know more than that? I think there needs to be a real investment between the town and the project managers to make sure that the resources they have are being used to bring the town in. Because as far as I can tell, I feel like we have been reaching out to, you know, all of our, all of our parents, all of this, you know, all the people that we can possibly reach. But we can't reach everyone. And when the town and the project managers are invested in reaching everybody and have figured out a way to do that in a planful way, then we will be able to get this kind of information. My concern is not so much that 20% of people don't know enough. It's about why they don't know enough. How have we not been able to present this information to them? Because there are other people, a large percentage of people, who have very strong opinions about it. And I just think that that's a really important thing to know, that this is not a school-run project. This is a town-run project, one that we are very invested in. And I think the town is invested in as well. But we need to be figuring that out as a town committee. And realizing that that is a town effort and not necessarily an only school committee-run effort. So I've said my piece. Oh, also, there's somebody on the Q and As who is anonymous poster. And if I remember correctly, we need to have a name because this is a public meeting. So even though we can't necessarily view you, it is important for us to be able to identify you. Otherwise, this becomes somebody who is not participating in the public part of the public meeting.
It also becomes more public record too. So we put all the questions in public record in the minutes.
Right. So it's not that we're ignoring you, it's that we simply can't answer your question if you're only seen as anonymous.
Beautiful. Thank you. And I just want to welcome Andrew Barrett. Sorry, Andrew.
Andrew.
Andrew is our Student Council Representative to the school committee. And Andrew is going to be a senior next year. Crazy. So super welcome. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I ask that you go to the Educational Stability Policy Review next? And then that way we can spend some time on the budget?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Educational stability and policy review.
Mary is up on the screen as well. I know she's been working with Megan and Tim on that. So I'll open up to Mary.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, we have met as a subcommittee policy committee now twice to review the policies. We met two weeks ago and then did some kind of follow-up work of trying to read over the policies and meet again today to look through the language. We do feel confident in moving the policies forward for a reading. But I will leave it to Tim and Megan to kind of add in any specific questions or comments. And I can kind of review some of the conversation that we had if people think that that might be beneficial as well.
Well, I'll pick up where we left off on our meeting today. Just regarding just some verbiage in the policy, whether or not the committee feels it's important to have Mary named as the contact? Or do we just leave it generically, the head of student services is the contact? And Mary and I kind of worked that out ourselves, saying that, oh, we would like her to stay here forever and ever and ever. I do see that when she moves on, we'd have to revisit the policy and change it. And that might be more work, but I thought I would kind of float the idea out to you all and see what you thought about it either way, if you have an opinion.
And just as a note on that as well, we do have on the Student Services website a notation that indicates that I am the point of contact and the liaison for these. So it is on our website for anyone that moves to the Student Services website to see. But it's not listed by name directly in the policy. It just refers to the position.
Have we spoken to the town's attorneys about that? I know that with the civil rights policies that we have, you're listed specifically by name at this point. Is that right? And also, what did the MASC, what did their model look like with that? Do they have simply Director of Student Services, or does it, it's different for each district?
Their model has simply Director of Student Services or Director of Special Education, depending upon the position or, you know, Assistant Superintendent, whatever the role might be within the district. We do have it listed specifically within the civil rights policy, which is kind of why we were going back and forth with this. However, we also have it listed directly on the website for this as the point of contact for foster care and the liaison, which is why we were kind of bouncing back and forth between whether we wanted to specify directly within the policy. The expectation is that it is known to the community and is up on the website, which it is. Beyond that, it's kind of a decision as to whether we want to list it by name within the policy.
Okay. Thanks. I'm just kind of looking at continuity. But as we're doing the policy reviews throughout, through MASC, you know, we'll be able to catch these kind of differences in between.
Okay. Super. Thank you.
Are those ones that we should be voting tonight, or is that not? I don't think so, right?
We have, yeah.
Mary, was it the next meeting or the meeting after?
Yes, because we met just this morning to finalize everything and wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to review the policies before having to do a first reading and vote on it. So the expectation was that we would meet, review, kind of present an update as to where we were with things. And hopefully be able to do the first reading and vote on June 18th.
Okay. And those are on our website under Current Policy Review, right? Just for those out there in TV land? Or they will be?
They will be. Yep.
Okay. And these are a pretty prescriptive policy that the state requires us to have. So there's very little variation in language generally, right, across policies?
Yes, very little. They did say that prior to the kind of rollout of these new policies that MASC has given guidance and language for, very few of the policies actually met the requirements, which is why they are kind of starting this new Educational Stability Review and helping districts to assure that we have all of the new language and expectations met. So I do feel confident with what we have kind of gotten together, that we should meet all of the requirements, as well as assure that all of these students are kept safe and considered in all of their stability within education.
Thanks, Mary. I appreciate it. Didn't mean to put you through the third degree. Always appreciated.
Super. All right. Anything else? Wait, Tim?
Speaking to mute, Mary, my assumption, I know you shared this with the packet, I think on April, or whatever, it was May 9th. Will you share them with the rest of the team or the committee prior to that, June 18th?
Yes. So now we will get them onto the website as under review. And we will provide updated policies to everyone for the June 18th vote.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Great job.
Now, I know that most of you were here for that particular policy review, but if you would like to stay for the budget, we'd appreciate it.
Comedy relief. All right. Not note, FY21 budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as you noted, last evening, we had our workshop. And as a part of that budget workshop, that reducing our number by $1,200,000. And we presented a way to get to that. And it's not, we gave you a menu of reduction options that I'd like to just go over, if I may. So we looked at prepaying computer equipment. I'd like to just go over, if I may. So we looked at prepaying computer equipment and capital, and then we have several items that are related to collective bargaining. So Professional Development Day, 183 to 182 for Unit A, defer stipend increase, course reimbursement, steps and lanes, 2% COLA, and then looked at reduction enforced in open positions, which we went through in great detail last night. And I do want to mention, so with the feedback I got, I think that when Michael was sharing his screen last night, and people really couldn't see the red checkmark on the right, the recommendations for reductions on our, on our budget side was anything that had a red checkmark next to it, next to it. So there was a whole list of 30-plus positions. We were not even remotely suggesting we reduce all those 30 positions. We reduced 11. But I think some folks got confused with that because they couldn't see the red checkmark on their screen, but that, I just wanted to clarify that. Reduction enforced open positions, the existing retirement new positions, non-payroll cuts, non-union increases, which is 23, or actually 24 FTEs with that, non, additional non-payroll cuts, elementary world language, and furlough or reduce Unit C aides from full-time to part-time. So that was, that menu was $4.6 million, just what we shared with you. So we gave you our rendition or our recommendation of that, which added up to the 1.2. So we chose 1, 7, 8, 9, and 10 as, as our, as our menu choices for the reduction. We, you know, that was our, that was just our recommendation. And I know that we wanted to give you the option to have all those choices, and, and that's what we're going to be discussing today. But I think at, by the end of the meeting, no matter what you just, you, you say, my, my feelings not going to be hurt when you say, Jeff, get rid of this, this, and this, that's fine. That's your role as a school committee. But I think for the town book and the town meeting, it's important that you at least vote that number this evening that was given, given to us by the town as a potential, as cuts. And then we can certainly work in the next probably seven days or so to get to a number or get, get to the positions that you feel, or the items on the menu that you feel best serves the community in the school district as far as getting to that 1.2 million. I think that it's never an easy task to cut 1.2 million. I will say that if you're, if any department is asked to cut 1.2 million, you can't expect life to be the same as it is right now. That is a huge amount, 1.2 million. And we're looking at a school district budget, in Midfield in particular, where 82% of our budget is salary. It's almost impossible to avoid cutting 1.2 million without including some salary folks in there. So that's, you know, kind of the, the high level there, that people have to expect a change in service. They have to. If you're reducing 1.2 million, it's just like if you're reducing 1.2 million in any other town service, you have to expect a reduction in service. And that looks very different in the schools, but it's also, but it's a reality that we have to understand. That I know that I got some really good emails from folks today, some real passionate emails, and I, and I appreciate that, and I would be disappointed if I didn't get that feedback, quite frankly, because I think that's what this process is all about, and that's what advocating for what you think is important in schools is all about. So, you know, I did it at the district level when we met with the warrant committee and everyone, and that you folks certainly did as well. So now it's coming down to what will the individual cuts look like to get you to 1.2 million? And I think we provided you with a menu of, of 13 items that, that makes sense. So, Madam Chair, however you want to take this discussion.
Can I, can I ask one question of Dr. Marson first?
Sure.
Is there any other town department that negotiates or discusses any of their cuts in an open meeting like this, that a, a town citizen is allowed to have input in?
I mean, my, my understanding would be that would happen at the Board of Selectment meeting, but I mean, Jess, you may know better because you go to all those meetings, but that would be, you know, Megan, you've been at all the warrant committee meetings with Jess too. I mean, I think it's, you know, schools are always different, right? We're always the biggest budget in town, and, you know, we always have additional scrutiny that other place, that other departments don't. It's kind of, it kind of goes in the territory a bit, but I'm not sure, Megan, if they've, if they go to the detail that we do in terms of line item detail and all that, I'm not sure. I couldn't answer that.
I think my experience has been that, that kind of the, the changing of what a department would like to see is done much more between town administrator and department head. And so it's almost like that never quite makes it to the, to the, the budget that is presented as a whole. So there is obviously, and also the warrant committee almost always has, or has, someone assigned to each department.
Right.
And that warrant committee person goes over the line items, and each department head also presents to the warrant committee. Now, the difference between the warrant committee and us, aside from the fact that, you know, I mean, we're just two different committees, and legally, the warrant committee is not able to make line item cuts to our budget. They can certainly tell us how much money we have, but it's written within the Mass General law that the school committee has control over its own budget within the amount of money that they are able to give to us. But within the warrant committee, up until Zoom meetings, there really hasn't been any, any video, or you're certainly welcome to go, but there's no real public input session. So our meetings are structured very differently. And as much as sometimes people feel like I don't, I think that you're kind of not being open about this, I think it's the bulk of the number of things we have to do and the mandates that we have, and that there's just a lot of information for the school committee. And that information is maybe just a little bit harder to find with the warrant committee, because they've simply not necessarily been asked to consistently video themselves or to consistently put up those budget numbers. And I think Christine Treuliler is really working hard at now kind of posting budgets, and, but there's always more room to grow as there is for us. So no, there's no other department that necessarily has this level of scrutiny, but I also think we, we work with kids and we employ a lot of people, and we're in a little bit of a different legal position than, than other departments.
I didn't mean to infer that the scrutiny was bad. I, I, the opposite. I, I want people to have a say. It's their, their town, their money. And I just was questioning why it isn't roundly that same way. That's all.
Yeah. I think it's just harder to find on the town side because it's not the same tradition, and it's not quite as mandated.
Yeah. I would, I would also say that it's no different than any other town, right? I mean, I've, I've worked in a couple other communities, and it's very similar. The school is the, usually the, the biggest employer in town, and if it's a regional, the same thing in the other towns. So I think there's, there's always that scrutiny, and, you know, that, that's, that's part of the process, and that's not, not an issue at all. I, I just want to just also mention that, you know, that when we did the, the presentation yesterday, and we had that conversation around the, the workshop, you know, those, those 13 menu items really weren't done in a vacuum. So we've had a lot of conversations with principals and the folks that do the schedules and do the enrollment in different classes and those kinds of things. And, and they gave us input in suggestions as part of this as well. So I think it's important to know that the, the folks that are in the ground, on the ground, doing some of this work as far as scheduling and everything, were really a big part of this conversation when we started looking at reductions and what, quite frankly, the conversation around what people could live, live with and live without. So I think that, that's an important piece of this conversation.
And then it comes to us also to make recommendations about, you know, whether that is also how we perceive it. But I always appreciate you guys as the, the initial and the educational experts that, that I am not, you know?
And just, just to say it again, because I know that, I want to make sure everyone understands this, that if, if you vote the 1.2 number this evening, that doesn't mean the reductions that were talked about last night are, are happening. It doesn't mean that. It just means we have to get to that number, and whatever you decide on that, the menu of 13 is the direction that we go in, and that's how we, you know, that's how we get to that, that one point. There's many, many ways to get to that 1.2 number. We just gave you one way, but we gave you a menu of 13 to try to figure it out.
And I think one of the other things, and I'm just saying this as a member of the, the subcommittee, because I think sometimes people don't realize this, they're like, well, I think the town should just give you more money. At this point, this is the pot of money that the town has, right? So whether we agree with that amount of money or not, or, and Megan and Jeff and Michael and I myself, we have, we've been working with the warrant committee for a very long time, and, and we've had some very, I'd say substantial and occasionally heated conversations about how we serve our kids and how do we do this? But this is the pot of money, and short of going to the taxpayers in a time in which we are all stressed, in a time that we have to think about what the next fiscal year could look like, short of doing an override campaign that we did in a time where it was very, where our economics were much different, and we felt like it was really important to do at that point, we couldn't, I can't propose that for us right now. I simply can't. I could not in good conscience stand up at a school, at a town meeting and say, today I think we need to ask people to pay that much more. And so, and unfortunately, that's what happens with, with revenue. That's how our town revenue is set up for every, for us and for the state. So it's not like we're like, well, if we just fought a little harder, we could have more money. We've been talking about this, but this is really the pot we have. So how do we do the best we can, like every family does, with the pot we have?
Great. So thank you. I am wondering, or what I would like to do now is really go into the question and the answers, and.
Our anonymous person has also identified herself. She simply couldn't, she's on somebody else's email account.
I just want to take this time to listen, you know, listen to what the folks who have tuned in have to say. And I did, I, I received a lot of emails in support of the Consumer Science. And there was, the first email I got this morning was so beautifully written by a sophomore student, and I've asked Owen to pop him over, and I'm hoping Wyatt, that you wouldn't mind reading your statement. Hi, Wyatt.
Hey, Wyatt.
Welcome, and thank you again for reaching out to me.
Oh, hey.
Okay. For those who do not know me, my name is Wyatt Collation, and I am currently a sophomore at Metford High School. I am speaking today about what a great mistake it would be to cut funding from the culinary arts classes. First and foremost, the culinary arts classes have been some of the most useful classes I have taken at MHS so far. I took both Culinary Arts and International Cuisine and Culture my freshman year, and they were my absolute favorite. These classes are extremely popular, and it has almost become a rite of passage to take these classes senior year. These classes are extremely fulfilling, and I am so glad I got the opportunity to take them. I am concerned that cutting funding from these classes would make it so younger grades could not experience the valuable lessons and life skills taught by Ms. Pollard. Furthermore, not only do these classes prepare students for the real world, but the International Cuisine and Culture class opens students' eyes to the diversity of the different cultures and traditions throughout the world. These classes teach students important life lessons that they may not learn otherwise. What if a student comes from a home where parents do not cook? Where are they going to learn the essential life skills of cooking? The internet? That almost sounds absurd, and they could learn from someone who has had years of experience in the culinary field and can teach anyone the ins and outs of navigating a home kitchen. In conjunction, from what I understand, these types of classes are no longer being taught in the United States anymore. So keeping these classes only boosts our school status as being one of the best public schools in the state. From what I understand, the school has added at least four more electives for the coming year. So why would one cut funds from a class that has been taught for many years, yet keep the electives that have not been taught yet? In regards to the new electives, the school does not know if students enjoy those classes or not, but the school most certainly knows that students love the culinary classes. I will end with this. Cutting funding from classes such as culinary arts devotes students from having the full opportunity of learning about important life skills needed from future. And it is not what, and is that not what high school is really all about? To quote Julie Child, no one is born to bake a cookie. One learns simply by doing.
Well said, Wyatt.
Thank you so much, Wyatt. I really appreciate your time and your passion and, and your voice advocating for the culinary arts. Thank you very much. Dr. Marson, I.
What I actually did when I shadowed a student this fall, I attended Stephanie's class as well, and she really is an incredibly gifted teacher. None of these decisions are easy in the least. I mean, I think that this is the one that hits us the hardest, and I don't know, you know, what, I don't know how we will come to a decision by the end of this meeting. But please know that every single position here, every single person here is, is valuable, that there is no indication here truly about your value, your ability to teach, or any of those things. These are awful decisions to make, and it's difficult. It's really hard, and I am so sorry that we are in the position of having to make these kinds of decisions. I mean, I think that we cannot say that enough. There's a lot of devil's bargaining that is happening right now.
And just for the record, as of 4:30 today, I did receive eight emails from current and graduated students in support of the Consumer Science course. And, and I also, I have, and before we go into the Q and A, I did receive an email from Stephanie Pollard that she said in her email that she would like to be publicly answered today. So I thought I would just read off those questions. And one is, how was, how was calculated and discussed what teachers would, would get reductions? How, how was it calculated and discussed what teachers would get reductions? I know you said it that, but if you could please.
Yeah. So I had said that earlier, where we were looking at, meeting with leadership team and really taking a look at the schedules and what, what courses could be reduced, and that went through elementary, middle, and high school, and also looking at the various departments as well. So it was an ongoing conversation for the last two and a half weeks with the leadership team, and they provided me with reductions that they thought could work, and we went through those, Michael and I, and, and that's how we came to it. So it really was based on, you know, what the buildings felt like they could do.
Okay. And question number two, a science department teacher is not returning in the fall. Why was there not a full-time teacher position for the science department on the budget cut?
Because that science teacher that's not returning is biology, and that's needed for freshman year. Kids have to take biology, and we would, we could not have one teacher down in that department, so we had to have that. It's not an elective, it's a, it's a requirement.
Correct. Number three, why is she being penalized for, for a 20-person maximum in our class when it's a fire code?
Yeah, I don't know if I would say she's being penalized for that. I just think it's when we, we were talking last night in the workshop, it was, it was really focusing on some of the electives that we can have the most kids at. So it really wasn't, weren't trying to penalize anyone for that. It was really a, a conversation around numbers and what opportunities kids could have, so.
And why is her position, Family and Consumer Science, taking a .3 cut? This should be more spread out amongst a number of teachers. I think that reiterates what you were saying earlier, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Number five, why was the budget not sent out to teachers prior to the school committee meeting? This is unethical.
Yeah, I would say that I sent an email to the, to the teachers, letting them know that we're going to have, my recommendation was going to be 11 FTE reduction, and out of that 11 FTE reduction was going to be 1.3 or 1.5 overall existing staff, and, and letting them know that it, you know, wasn't, there's going to be impact looking at it, but it certainly saved a heck of a lot of jobs doing it that way. But I would say that, you know, I take full responsibility for the communication breakdown between myself and the high school on that particular thing. I felt like, you know, I just take responsibility for that particular piece of notification of people prior to the meeting. So that didn't take place as I had thought it was going to take place. So that's, that's, I'll take full responsibility for that.
Okay.
But I would also say that I couldn't, considering what we've been working on, we didn't have a document that we were working on the document ready, getting ready for you guys at five o'clock. And we were still working on that. Even when I sent the, you know, the email, trying to fine tune some of the reductions there, because there's, there's plenty of other reductions that we can have. There's some in word language at the elementary level at, you know, point two, point four. There's plenty of other reductions in that 30 that we gave you. Looking at those. So there's, there's other, there's other places to go. I just, we just gave you that one recommendation.
All right.
I would just, Jeff, you're answering them all. But Jeff mentioned a few minutes ago how much we have been fighting for the overall budget that we have. I think Jeff, you know, I think we figured out that that reached closer this week. Like, you know, you have to, to build, I mean, that's just the one observation. I'm not even on the budget committee. We've been fighting that as best we can.
No doubt.
I just want to, Stephanie did put in a statement in the Q and A, and I, as, as we just answered her questions, I want to come full circle here. Hi, I am Stephanie Pollard, a Medfield resident at 93 Harding Street, a supporter, supporting member of the MMA. I am the only family in consumer science teacher responsible for the curriculum at Medfield High School. If approved, I would be the only tenured faculty member absorbing the majority of this proposed budget cut. I believe all cuts should be throughout all departments. We need to reevaluate the budget cut to be distributed equally in all departments. Thank you to all the families and students here supporting me and reaching out to me in the last 24 hours. The overwhelming amount of support has reminded me why I have always loved my job. Thank you. All right. Um, and let me read, let me start from the top here. Budget question from Lindsay Rogers. Thank you for all your time and effort during these unusual times. We appreciate you. The reason some grades ended up with 25 students per class a few years ago was because of summer move-ins. Should a large number of students move into Medfield this summer in a particular grade, will a floater teacher be still be in the budget? So class sizes don't go high again. Grade four seems like it could be close to 25, and some K two seem like they could go over 22. Thanks.
Yes, I would say we don't have a floater teacher like we had a few years ago in the budget. We had done that for Wheelock to try to make sure that those kids that were in a larger class size when they're at Memorial, when they got to Wheelock that reduced that class size. We don't have that in there right now, but I know I shared with the school committee a class size document today that shows, and Michael, can you pull that up? That shows what the class sizes would be, what they are currently and what they would be next year, given the reductions that we're talking about.
Owen, hear my screen.
Yeah, I've made you a call host.
I can just went by the tab, Michael. We just had it right there. The far, the tab in the far right. So when Michael, while Michael's doing that, I would say that when you look at the class sizes for next year, you'll see that they aren't what you would expect in terms of increasing. I would say that that fourth grade right now, based on on what we have would decrease, the average would decrease there for that class coming up. The class sizes in Wheelock will essentially stay the same. The only place that you will look at additional students, there's one grade at Dale Street that will increase. But we're, it looks pretty good K to five. There it is. All right. So just so you can see that the current class size is on the, your left, 1920 projected class size. So we're at 198 right now in kindergarten with a class size of average full day class of 22. If we're looking at next year, we have 176 right now. Can you keep right there, Michael? Thank you. 176 right now, that's that are, that are registered. We have closed out full day kindergarten right now. We may open that up depending on on what happens. And I think the the conversation that we had yesterday and people that weren't there yesterday need to hear this again today is that, you know, we may get additional state money in this over the summer, because the state budget is typically done in May and June, and we get those numbers. But we are not going to get those numbers until late July or early August. So by getting them, if we are fully funded in chapter 70, which is the money that's earmarked for schools, that would be additional $600,000 going to the school district. So clearly, that will, that will poke, that will prevent us from having to reduce class size, reduce staffing anymore. However, conversely, if we planned on 10% of a reduction in state aid, but if it comes out in August that there is 20% reduction state aid, then we'll be losing another $600,000 and have to have these conversations again, going forward about what we're going to do and have those conversations right before school starts. So we're kind of doing this in the dark right now. We don't know what school is going to look like in September. We don't know what the budget is going to look like from the state level. So a lot of this is nebulous. And unfortunately, we have to kind of embrace that right now, because that's all we have. Typically, by the first week in May, our budget is set. Everything is done, and we're getting ready for the next school year. It's just not the case right now. So taking a look at at first grade, you'll see the class size this year is 21.4, next year 22.1. Second grade average class size this year is 20.7, next year 21.6. Third grade right now is 20, next year it's 20.8. Fourth grade, you'll see the reduction of 23.1, and it goes to 22.2. Fifth grade, if you can scroll up a little bit, Michael, on that. Fifth grade, the average class size right now is 21.4, and looking at next year at 23. Now, obviously, that does, this does not include kids that move in over the summer. That's, that is no, there's no question about that. So those numbers will go up if that's the case. You'll notice that right now, the current fourth grade has actually lost a kid, has, has moved. So I assume that we're going to get additional students that come in. There's probably no doubt. But as we are right now, this is what the average class size will look like. So it's not as dire as one might think, you know, based on some of the reductions. But certainly, if we, you know, really pay close attention to grade five with that 23, Michael, scroll up to kindergarten again, please. So, you know, this is worthy of additional conversation at the kindergarten level. So this year, we have the eight full day kindergarten sections. And we know that as a school committee, we kept this out at 22 a few years ago. It was originally capped at 20. Now it's 22. We do have a full time aid in each one of those classrooms, and we will, that is still in the budget to continue to have full time aid in each one of those sections. So if we, we have that 176 right now, I think I said last night, projections are about 223. We just have not seen the realization of these projections. If for some reason, we do get an influx of students, we do have the luxury of full day kindergarten being tuition based, so that it will be able to help us out if we need to add another teacher. So it won't cost the full amount of adding another teacher, say, at the middle school or the high school. So that's another thing that we, we're just going to keep an eye on that and and try to add another teacher if we need to. But looking at one, two, three especially, really don't see any issues with with class size at this point.
All right. So I, um, we've moved Stephanie Pollard over, but before Stephanie speaks, I just, as we're on class sizes, I'm trying to, I'm sorry, I'm going through these Q and As and trying to consolidate. So we can stick with it at theme more or less. But I'd like to read Megan Fuller's comment and questions. Without retiring a kindergarten teacher to replace the retiring teacher, there will be six classes of 23 and one of 22. Oh, where'd it go? Sorry, folks. It's, it moved on me. Oh, sorry. Um, one of 22, if I'm doing my math correctly, if additional children who require a full day due to IEP move into the district, it seemed likely that some classes could be 24. Is this an acceptable K, K class size for the district? At that point, would you hire an additional teacher? Would some kids need to be reassigned to different classrooms?
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see us having full day kindergarten at 24 kids. I don't, I don't see that happening. But we would make some sort of adjustment or we'd do something. I mean, I don't think anyone, I mean, I think people have to also take consideration. You know, what are my earlier comments about a hybrid school day in September? A hybrid school day, if that's in cases what we need to do as a school district, they just telling us that, you know, that would be a situation where half the kids are coming to school one week and another half the kids are coming to school another week. That's one model that they're talking about to state level. So if we do have additional class size, it's going to be cut in half. You know, you're going to be, the live classroom may have 10 or 11 kids in it. That might be something that happens. I'm not hoping for that. I hope that doesn't happen. But that's just something else to consider, that that is a possibility of what September 2020 may look like.
All right.
And I think as you're asking the questions here too, what Jeff just mentioned is echoing a lot of the decisions that still remain to be made, as we don't know what, what September is really going to look like yet as well. So on top of us trying to keep class sizes small, which I'm holding back comment as the crowd does, because of course, I have a strong opinion of that as well. So I didn't mean to interrupt, but I wanted to just remind everyone and echo what Jeff said, because until June 15th, we don't know what else there is.
Yeah. Stephanie, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I just want to reiterate that spreading the budget cut evenly at and equally throughout all departments at the high school is a necessity. I feel like a few teachers were targeted, me being one of them. And I just want to make sure that we're aware that, you know, it could have just been point one from me, point one from somebody else that teaches electives, somebody else. And I also want to reiterate to the town that I'm a Medfield resident. And I teach here in town, and I'm the only teacher that teaches family consumer science. It's just really affecting me. And I appreciate everybody's support. So thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you, Stephanie. You are appreciated. And I know this is difficult, but I'm hoping that we can talk a little bit after we go through the Q and A and maybe talk about some, some solutions. Zoe, I think we, we did answer this, but I just want to acknowledge that Zoe Pollard asked a question. How are budget cuts for teachers who would get reductions calculated and discussed? And you had said this was a two week, more than a two week conversation with the leadership team, and this was a thoughtful process.
Yes.
As difficult as it was. And I think Mr. Pollard has, okay, here, I have been reviewing the proposed budget since last night. I think an additional review needs to be discussed. There are plenty of areas to distribute the percentage across other departments as opposed to the majority directed at family and computer and consumer science. This department impacts one tenured faculty member and not the wellness department, which contains six faculty. In addition, the class attendance for family and consumer science is consistently full year after year for the past five years. Drama, social studies, English departments that all offer electives can be adjusted. There needs to be a greater distribution across all departments to absorb the 1.2 cut. Thank you for all your diligent work to make this a well-balanced budget. Please be safe. And Dylan Olivero, is that the seventh grader? In terms of the budget, I am wondering why the legal line item cost has gone up 100%. This is a huge increase. Dr. Marston, do you want to answer that one?
Yeah, I think we've had, we've had increased costs over the past school year. So we've, we've had open media law complaints and public records requests that we've had to involve our attorneys in. So that's cost a lot of money for us as a school district and as a, as a community. So that's why it's there.
How much does that exactly cost, Jeff? You know, let me ask him.
I'd rather not quote a number, Leo, because I know that it will be shared other places, but I do know it's, maybe, Michael, is it over, over 30,000? I'm not sure.
For this fiscal year?
Yes.
For this fiscal year, we're in the twenties, about 20.
Twenties. And then overall, like the last couple of years, I don't know. It's got to be.
Close to, I don't want to quote it, but it's, it's high 30s, low 40s.
Yeah, I know. I just, we don't really want to say a number because we're held to it forever. So just want to be careful about that.
Yep, totally understand. Okay, I'll refrain from comment for now.
All right. Um, question here from Isaac Poplar. In terms of the budget for school buses, what if the governor disallows buses or two thirds of the kids are driven by their parents? Have these potential savings to the budget been considered before the budget cuts are made?
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't, we can't really do this in what ifs, unfortunately, because we have, as I said before, we had a lot of, there's a lot of things that we don't know right now, which is making this process increasingly difficult. We don't know what the governor is going to say. We just know that, as I said earlier, that we're going to start surveying parents to get a sense of where they are with transportation. If we open up as regularly in September. So that's, we realized some savings this year in transportation because of school. And thank goodness we did, because that's going to help us make up for the, the cut for, for capital from the town. So yeah, that's all, that's an ongoing process. We're having conversations with bus company. You know, I wish I had a better answer for you, but we just don't know what the guidance is. We could have a huge spike in COVID-19 after the protests. Who knows? I don't know. I know that I read this morning that that is one of the concerns that DPH has is so many folks together in one spot. I mean, they won't even let us go to a restaurant and have dinner, but we have thousands of people. And so there's, there's got to be something there, right? And I know they're really concerned about that. So we have to wait and see on that.
Okay. Um, let me start from the top here. Renee, thoughts on school, oh, school project outreach? In order to ensure future success, a larger concern is the small percent of respondents compared to the population. Oh, that's regarding the survey. So I think compared to other surveys, Renee, we reached out to Jean Minio, who's done a lot of surveys and did some research for us. So we had about 857 surveys, and in past town surveys, they've reached about 1,000 or so. But again, this is not the end of surveying the public. Right now, I think we want to take the summer to educate, to engage, and to get some harder numbers. And we will have more surveys most likely in the fall before school committee votes, before the school building votes. So rest assured, there will be more opportunities for feedback.
Yeah, Renee, the other thing is, and I actually hesitate to answer this right now, because this really is a budget discussion, but I think you'll notice the the percentage of respondents who were school, who had kids in school was very large. And I think that has to do with trying to help the town engage the rest of the population. Again, we only have an email list. We only have a direct access to the people who are within our schools. And I think that the that that smaller respondent list at the kind of other ends outside of the kids in school or parents who have kids in school is a place where there's a lot of room for growth with how the town is able to communicate with people, just generally, not only just within this, but I think that there's a lot of opportunity there.
Great. Thank you. Katie Novak, 40 Wichita Road. Will there be a full time aid in each of the seven full day sections?
We said yes, right?
Yeah. Okay, sorry. Thank you. I'm trying to do a lot of things. Our Chris McHugh Potts. Question number one, which civic stipend positions are at risk of not being funded in FY21? What is the status of What is the status of chamber string stipend that MMA has been paying for several years? We'll maybe do question by question.
I don't think there's any, any specific stipend positions that are at risk of not being funded FY21. I know that we have on our list, our menu of one to 13 of looking at reduction in stipends. It has nothing to do with the existing stipends. Every stipend that is in the, in the teacher's contract is in the budget. That is an increase to stipends, as I said earlier. Each year over the last couple of years, we've been working with the union to increase stipends. And we've allocated $100,000 a year, which was in the contract to do that. So as I said before, that, that's what the $100,000 is. It has nothing to do with chamber string stipends or anything else. That isn't, Michael, do you want to talk about the chamber strings and what that is?
I just, I can't remember what year of the contract we were looking at. Those stipends, Jeff, I think it might be. It might be either, it's either this year or next year, but that hundred thousand that we were talking about has to do with increases to stipends, not decreases to stipends.
Correct.
Okay, beautiful. Number two, how much money and for what remains intact for FY21 for each of the department initiatives? DIIT medium line number 104 combined is 133264. Athletics line 362 include transportation. DI Lit Social Studies Coordinator line 150 and Superintendent Office line 412. What is the reason that 90,000 was allocated last year for man RSV and 95,000 for FY21? And is that still intact?
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, that there's a lot there. We may, we may want to just have to send Ms. McQpots an email tomorrow with some of the responses. That's this, I don't, you know, we don't have our books out. We're not going to spend everyone's time that's on here with us researching that. It's, it's, you know, multi-million dollar budget. We don't have that right up top of our heads, so.
Okay. Have we saved any money on electricity, heat, phones since school shut down mid-March? Have those utility actuals been readjusted?
So I can answer that question. So for the our utilities are a month behind. So currently we're paying the May invoices. We're seeing approximately a $10,000 savings for the month of April and a $10,000 savings for the month of May. And that's in this year's budget. We are looking at, like we said before, that because our budget was cut and our supplies are cut. We're looking to see if we can prepay some of that for next year because we got permission from the state and the town accountant that we can prepay certain items for next year.
Okay, thank you. Meredith Chamberlain, if you do not decide on where the 1.2 is being cut tonight, will you continue to zoom your budget workshops for transparency like last night? I think residents deserve that since the cut is so large.
Absolutely. It's a, it's a public meeting. It's a workshop, public meeting. Unless the rules change where we can actually have a live meeting, of course.
Okay. This is from Gail Duffy. Please note that, please note the two questions I sent to school committee email. I would like to remind this forum that the high school English department had a 1.5 cut. Gail, I don't recall, I stopped checking my email at 4:30, but I'll take a look. Do you, Gail, in the meantime, do you want to type it in there because I did not receive it earlier today?
Just, it came through just as we were, I think.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, sorry, Gail. I did not check my email. After 4:45, 4:30. So if you could please retype. This is from Catherine Muntz. What is the cost to cut culinary arts? Seems like a great place to teach math, science and English.
So I just want to be clear, we're not cutting culinary arts. We're cutting it by point three. We're not cutting the whole program. That is not, that's not the intent in, in, we haven't. You haven't even made that decision as a school committee. That was just a recommendation that we, we made last night during a budget workshop. It's not a done deal by any means. School committee needs to make that decision and it was just a recommendation by the school district. Michael, do you have the number on that?
$20,814.
Thank you.
Okay. Folks, if you do not have your last name in here. Could you pretty please type it in? I know, sorry.
Identify it in the body?
Yes, please. Karen Schaefer. Hello, this is Karen Schaefer, the business teacher at MHS and a resident of town 28 Hillcrest. I just wanted to let you know that we had enough high school students sign up for 11 business electives. They are semester classes and we launched a successful DECA chapter, business competition events. I love teaching and living here. I also understand how contracted budgets reduce options. And the district cannot spend more than what we have. Thank you, Karen. Oh, and Joseph Concilio. Is it possible to show on your screens the additional options presented last night, especially those that could be shared amongst all staff rather than those specific to certain positions? Many of us viewed those numbers last night, but it could be helpful for others to see alternative options.
Can you put that up, Michael? That would be the, the menu of 13 that I keep talking about?
Please.
If people haven't seen that.
And actually, along with, Joseph sent me. And so before we go into those numbers, Joseph sent a thoughtful email and the body of it is, while I can appreciate the focus on recommendations being made, we're done in a manner to ensure the educational value of our students. Many of the minor changes appear to affect class size. These changes will have direct impact on the educational value of our students. With changes being recommended, we are looking at increasing class sizes in many grades across the district to levels just short, just a short time ago, we voted for an override to avoid. It was mentioned that some of the options to meet the budget number could come from renegotiations with the union contract employees, but those were not recommended. There were three bullet points indicated in an alternative options related to freezing certain contract items that would make up a large portion of the 1.2 million deficit that we are trying to reach. Freezing cola, steps and ladders and education reimbursement see natural ways to level the cuts without eliminating or not back filing positions across the district, which will have a direct impact on our students' class sizes, especially at the elementary level. While I understand union negotiations are never easy, it is imperative that all stakeholders make sacrifices while we all begin to live a new normal. Perhaps some compromises could be made in these, in these items for the next year or two while tax revenues are expected to be lower. Rather than reducing our staffing for the upcoming year, especially with all the unknowns, I feel it would be more beneficial to maintain or increase staffing levels. But with compromises from all Medfield's, all of Medfield's educational system. So. In the, I'm sorry, Michael, now do you want to bring it up? Sorry about that.
He wasn't, he tried to bring it up and we weren't seeing it again like last night. Same issue.
Okay, well, those items.
Jeff, I have it up if you want me to bring it up.
Those items, while, while you're bringing it up. Dr. Marston repeated at the beginning here, the PD Professional Development Day, 138 days to 182. Okay, there we go. Those we cannot talk about publicly in an open meeting. School committee has to talk about that in executive session and because of the collective bargaining, so. But these will be items we will be talking about in executive session. All right. Maybe we'll keep that up while I. So just reread his, is it possible to show the screen? So now we've got that up. And so people can take a look at that. And Dr. Marston, so just to reiterate, these are the reduction items, what you called the menu items, so to speak. I hate to reduce it to that, but. But really, tonight, school committee has to vote on a budget. And then we will still discuss going forward, whether it's workshops, school committee meetings, where all this falls into place. And it may change after June 15th, after directives from DESI, et cetera. All right. David Rogerio, if the HERO bill is passed at the federal level, will Medfield get any funding from that?
So I can just speak to what we've been hearing around federal funding and I'll just explain my frustration that I think most superintendents and town administrators in the state feel. You may have seen that Medfield received 1.1 million in CARES Act money and that unfortunately, unlike the recession of '08 and '09, where the money was distributed to the communities to offset the losses that they had. This is being done as a reimbursement program. So essentially, any reimbursement that the town of Medfield, and there's a narrow definition of what we can do as a school department. We have to submit that to the federal government as a reimbursement and then the money gets sent back to us. So I think I've said it before and I'll say it again for those that haven't heard me say it. There's no way in the world that you're going to get a town the size of Medfield that's going to accumulate 1.1 million dollars in reimbursement related to COVID-19 within a couple of months. Just not going to happen. So we're hoping that our legislators will be looking at reviewing this and using the mechanism that they did in '08, '09. When the American for Recovery Act came out and we were, the money was distributed as a way of of filling the gaps that both the state and the local governments had. And that was, was fantastic because we didn't, excuse me, we didn't lay where I was before superintendent. We didn't have to lay off any teachers or any staff at that point because that arrow money came in and made us whole. Right now, the way that the federal government's doing that, it's just not helping us very much. So if we get a change on that and that money, that 1.1 million gets turned into revenue that the town, you know, the school can use, then that would be great, but we don't know anything more than that right now.
Gail Duffy, I wanted to make a note that.
Comment on that as well. The selectmen at this point have been, and the town administrator have been quite clear that any revenue that comes back to the town from any of those reimbursements, should that actually happen, or not reimbursements, but for any kind of revenue replacement, will first go to fulfilling our financial policy, the town's financial policy to fund their OPEB or kind of retirement funds that almost every town in the country is running a deficit on right now. And to increase the level of free cash that we have in reserve, which is supposed to be at a certain level to ensure financial stability. So my understanding is that anything that comes to the town that is not a specific school-related reimbursement will most likely go to the town first to fill up those areas in which they have distributed that cash in order to get us through this year. But then they need to replace it or it seriously dings the town's ability to to borrow money at the most economic level. So I don't know if that necessarily makes sense and I described that realistically, but that's my understanding. So not saying that there won't be more money beyond that. But I think that their priority is to fulfill that financial policy obligation that they are not doing right now in order to get us through this year.
Thank you. So Gail Duffy. I wanted to make, make note that English and math, both disciplines which require graduation connected MCAS have larger classes seems problematic in, in the only two MCAS disciplines. I want to alert the community that the Writing Center and MHS resources for over 20 years will probably not exist next year due to cuts. And Bonnie Ren Burgess. Can cuts to the administration please be reviewed? Is there a slide for them?
For what the slide means, but.
I can show the other script, the other tab.
Yeah, I mean, I think right now we've, we've frozen the salaries of administrators, so that, that's a $95,000 cut in the budget. So anyone, the 24 people that are non-union, some of them aren't administrators, but they're non-union. They're, they're frozen right now.
Okay. Oh, Ellen Tubman would like to know which of the three item menus were recommended? Is that, that's, yes, it's right here.
Yeah, the 13 items she wants to see the 13 items. It's all right there.
Okay, so, all right, thank you. And Jim, can you please submit your last name pretty please? Does anyone see that? Chris McQpots, what is the status of Student Opportunity Act and the district plan deadline? Is it on hold?
Yeah, I was told by the commissioner that all that is on hold. So that, we've said that at other meetings too, that it's all, it's all on hold. There's no. There's no way right now the state can even say they're going to have an SOA Student Opportunities Act money to give to communities. So that was 71,000 for us, additional money, which really other communities were getting a heck of a lot more and they've counted on that. So as I said earlier, every community is in the same situation we're in and they're going through this, this process. So, yeah, there's. It's on hold.
All right. Chris McQpots, let's make sure to touch on the US civil rights issue, lack of compliance with sped regulations, formation of teaching assistant union, not just open meeting law and public records laws, because those were avoidable.
Is that in reference to the legal bill or?
I'm assuming.
The numbers that Michael said wasn't the, the overall legal bill. It's actually broken out now when we get a legal bill that says open meeting law in, in public records issues with the person's name on it. So it's, it's not, it's not like we had a cumulative number that Michael was sharing. That's the number just for that.
Okay. And another statement from Chris McQpots. Open meeting law complaints are like health complaints filed against restaurants. Attorneys are not hired to fight health violations. Medfield decided to needlessly hire attorneys to fight open meeting law complaints, including one related to the secret 3% to the superintendent salary due to teacher contract negotiations.
Yeah, so I'm not going to take the bait on that one, Madam Chair, but I will say that I don't know any school district that would not involve attorneys when you have that, any school committee. That's just not a true statement, so.
Okay.
I suggest we stay the questions. I mean, I, there is some, I do want to remind everyone that I, we all care. I care deeply. When I look at the sheet in the upper left, it was the first time I saw it last night. I know tonight I must vote on a number. I don't necessarily think what I see right now is the best way to reach the number. So I just, you know, I want to make sure we're answering questions around that and make, you know, trying to stay where, where there are questions.
Yeah.
And I don't know.
I appreciate that, Tim, but one of the most important parts about living in America is that we do have free speech, so I would certainly not be the person who would.
No, I understand. And I guess we decide sometimes, usually we limit our time to three minutes and whatnot. So that's the only thing I want to, in some way, shape.
You know what, Tim? I completely hear you, but I think at the beginning of this, you know, our intention is to listen and because this is such a, you know, an important, it affects a lot of people and I just, I'm hoping that we're at least allowing people to be heard as.
Yeah, not against that. I'm saying we're back and forth on, on the legal.
I'll try. Sorry. So Jim Muntz this is from. So can you, okay. You can skip the culinary arts question since you answered my wife. What about the snow? What about the snow days? Can we pass on those and do them as remote?
Would love to. Not my decision, but would love to.
Okay. Let's see. "I live here for the school district. What is going on with the town revenue? It's not clear to me. Not sure if I'm the only one who doesn't understand what's going on." That's a whole big, that's a bigger.
Can you, who?
Jim Muntz, sorry.
Oh, sorry, Jim, my apologies. All right. That's something actually that I think if you go back to selectmen's meetings throughout the last several years, but certainly within this year, it ends up coming down to basically money in, money out in a lot of ways. Revenue and how much our town is dependent almost entirely on taxpayer revenue. And expenses, which do not keep pace and essentially can't keep pace with a 2.5% limit on the tax levy. And that over the last 10 years, if not longer, state and federal reimbursement and funding for towns has gone down significantly. So, and it's been a silent creep, but it is one that is hitting a lot of towns. And when you do not have any other source of income, like additional commercial income, at a certain point, you end up getting pretty squeezed. And so I think that's going to be the true, the true task of the next 20 years or so is to try to figure out how we fix that. And I would then give a plug for the townwide master plan visioning session on Sunday. And I'll put that out on Facebook. But if you want to have a voice about how we try to increase our revenue and look at our future, I would suggest, I would suggest participating in the townwide master plan because that is long view as opposed to these really awful fiscal years that we are going to be experiencing for the next two years. So, thank you, that was my plug.
Okay, thank you. Morgan Reynolds, is it possible that there are funds to be reallocated by delaying the rollout of co-teaching at the high school level? I'm not sure I understand that.
Yeah, I'm not sure I do either.
Are we, are we doing a co-teaching class at the high school? And I didn't.
I mean, I think it's, it's just reallocating money to, you know, to certain areas. So I think it's, again, we've had this conversation, it's all about choices, right? So this is, when we start to get to this, this stage of the game, it's all about choices. So that might be something you consider.
Rob Wilson, Stewart Street, I'm not as familiar with all this process. So hopefully this isn't a stupid question. But last night, you were unable to discuss items two through five that related to certain items such as union COLAs. Can those be discussed tonight? And are there options to adjust COLAs down? Down as a means to more evenly spread the impact of budget cuts? No, we can't.
Executive session.
Yes. Sorry, Rob, because it is collective bargaining, sorry. And Jennifer Hearn, given the current uncertainty about how schools will reopen, how much are you planning to budget for necessary online solutions, including a curriculum mapper that are more comprehensive than what is being provided for so far? Has this factored into the budget yet? If so, what numbers and resources are you considering? Pearson Online Learning Solutions, in order to make curriculum mapper effective before the start of the school year, teachers need to access to sooner than later so that, so they can populate it over the summer.
Yeah, that's not a plan right now to do that.
Okay. Kristin Martin, 91 Green Street, has been, has there been conversation with the administration to reduce freeze COLA? Okay, we stated that we have to do that in executive session.
No, that's the administration one that we've already put in as a cut that.
Oh, yes.
All non-union salaries have been frozen.
Yes, that's the 95,000.
Right.
Um, alrighty. And I think, Cara Jeller-Meany, she did write me earlier today. "I'm concerned about eliminating the WeLock Math Specialist position. I think it's very important to retain our support positions, especially in the unprecedented times where our students and teachers will need that support. Specialists are not only a support to students, but to teachers as well. Given that students missed out on so much school this year, I think it will be more challenging than ever to meet students where they are and give them what they need. It's an equity issue for our more vulnerable learners." Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Cara.
Yeah.
I very much feel that, I understand that.
Yeah, and we definitely spoke about that last night, I agree. Sarah Brown, I wrote an email to school, to me, this morning in support of MHS English. Yes, it was received, Sarah. And I do, I noted, and I, just to let everyone know, all the emails I received as of 4:30 today, I forwarded to all school committee members. I'm not reading every single email, but every school committee member did receive a copy so that everyone would know what is on the hearts and minds of the townspeople. Pamela O'Brien, I wish to voice my support for the Writing Center at MHS. This has proved to be valuable both for our children. The high school, the Writing Center models many offered at colleges and universities and is an effective preparation for MHS students to gain useful knowledge and experience utilizing this resource for success at a college level. Thank you.
Can I ask a question there?
Yeah.
How, and you probably won't be able to answer it. We need one of the teachers to actually answer that, or maybe Jeff, you can answer this. But how are any of these proposed cuts affecting the writers' workshop? Like, how are those linked?
The teacher that is going on the leave of absence that we're choosing not, and again, choosing in the recommendation not to rehire oversees that program.
Okay. No.
Yeah, there's no great solutions. I mean, I mean, we tried to, as, if folks weren't a part of the conversation last night, we tried to look at, you know, how did, number one, how do we at least, the least amount or minimize the amount of impact on students and their opportunities? And that was what we went through. And that's what the principals went through at the building level to give us some of these recommendations. And then how can we minimize existing staff? I mean, I think if you're looking at something where you're asked to cut 1.2 million and you have 1.3 existing staff total, that losing either position or a fraction of their position, it's pretty remarkable, quite frankly, that you can, you can get 1.2 million done with that number. Now, we can move that, whatever that 1.5 is, you guys can determine what that would look like. But as I said last night, the alternative is what lots of places do is just pink slip everybody and let the chips fall where they may, and then start that game of bumping this person and that person. And we just chose not to do it that way. We chose to spend time and try and decide. But none of these, none of these are easy. I mean, none of these are easy solutions. And the way we viewed it as a leadership team might be very different than the way you view it as a school committee and certainly the people that are advocating for certain staff members view it differently. So I think that's, you know, that's part of this process. And that's why we're having this conversation right now, is to get as much input as we can and we move forward.
If I could just say something about the Writing Center from a student perspective, like just as a senior going into the college application process, like not having the Writing Center is going to be kind of unfair to us as a class and the future classes to come who don't have that resource. I am in the Honors in Superior seminar class right now that kind of works with the Writing Center. And it's honestly been one of my favorite classes throughout high school. And writing is obviously like a super important skill to have, it's connected to MCAS. So I just think that the proposed cut to that program should definitely be reviewed seriously before any final decisions are made.
So just, just a clarification, Andrew, the program itself isn't, isn't being cut. So there could be another teacher that would take it over. It's just the teacher that has done it is on a leave of absence and we're choosing not to replace her. I just want to clarify that.
Okay, so it would just be another teacher, not the whole program?
It could be, yeah, it could be another teacher doing that. So the program, it's because the person that has done it for so long is going on a leave of absence in the recommendation, doesn't mean that someone else in the department can't do it.
Okay. And so would the class remain intact or would it?
I'd have to, I'd have to talk to the high school administration about that, how that works.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Zoe Pollard, another student, can you explain the decision to not include the Professional Development Day Option Two in the budget cuts?
That's a negotiated thing.
Yeah, sorry, Zoe, we can't.
Yeah, I think, I think we have to just make it clear that numbers two, three, four, five, and six, we can't put in a recommendation because that all has to be collectively bargained with the teachers' union. So they can't be part of the equation. So that's an important piece to remember.
It can't be part of the equation to discuss here and now.
Or it can't be part of the equation that we presented prior to discussing that. So that's why we're having executive session to discuss those. But that couldn't be part of our recommendation because we hadn't collectively bargained that. That would be illegal to do.
Right. And then Meredith, I know we cannot talk about things in the collective bargaining agreement. However, if the teachers do 182 days instead of 183, then all administrators should also get a reduction of one day and take the same proportional salary hit as the teachers they lead. Okay. Thank you. Morgan Reynolds, "To be specific, C2 English classes have been moving to a co-teaching model, partnering an English teacher with a certified special educator. I'm sure it would be difficult to disassemble as it would, as it was to assemble. I don't mean to imply this isn't an important, this isn't an important shift, but I assume there is money there somewhere." Okay. Thank you. Julia, can you please revisit Jay Hearn's question? Can you explain in more detail as to why online learning programs are not being looking, are not, have not been looking into more seriously and being factored into the budget?
Yeah, so I would say that it's not that not being looked into, we're just not looking at Pearson Online Learning Solutions. That's not one of the things that we're looking at. We've been using the Google Classroom model and will continue to use that for the foreseeable future. I also think it's important to understand that there is money in this budget, which we do every year for research and development that our teachers will be doing again this summer. And we're waiting for the guidance on the 50 to see exactly what areas of research and development our teachers will be working on this summer. So that will be, that focus of R and D will be on what remote learning, May or May or hybrid would have to be. I mean, I think it's important to understand that our teachers, you know, had to pivot their profession within a couple of weeks' notice and have done a really good job with that. I mean, they've done a great job. And, you know, it's very different to teach in this, in this way. And they've, I think I sent a tweet out at one point, like, I can't imagine another profession that can pivot that quickly and do it so well. It's not perfect. We never said we were recreating the school day because that's impossible. We're not going to recreate brick and mortar through Zoom. I've just about had it with Zoom, quite frankly. I can't wait to have conversations with people face to face. But, you know, we did the best we could and people worked real hard. And it was, it was far from perfect. But we're just not signing on to Pearson Online Learning Solutions as, as one of the companies that we're, one of the platforms we're using. We're going to continue to use the Google Classroom platform and our teachers be working over the summer to do some of that input. We recognize that if we go full remote learning next year, starting in September, that it has to be different and there has to be more. We all know that. So that's what we'll be working on this summer.
Jeff, I can comment on, you know, the Pearson learning structures, you know, and there's no shortage of what called CMSs out there, or content management systems that manage.
We all get emails, emails every day from salespeople, ever since the pandemic started. I get, there's more CMSs out there than you could ever imagine.
Yeah, and they all have, you know, they all have their, you know, their strengths and weaknesses. And, you know, you know, a lot of them are leveraged in schools today, particularly like ourselves, for interventions and to close gaps. But they're, you know, they're very far from, you know, a replacement or something that you would probably reflect, you know, as a supplement to what we're doing today with our students face to face and then to pivot to a blended model. You know, this is building the airplane, you know, while you're flying it. And I do have an extensive background in this space. And I'll say that, you know, it is, it's not just as easy to buy one of those systems, which by the way, comes with a hefty price tag to boot, you know, on a per-student basis. So I appreciate the direction we're taking in from a professional perspective and support that. And I know that the summer will allow the time to take a better approach to whatever model it is that we have to use. Or, I mean, we have to be prepared that we could start back one way and have to pivot to another. So, but I think that that's what the summer months will allow us to prepare for or allow the administration to prepare for. And with the support of the school committee, of course.
Yeah, I mean, you've seen, I mean, those of you, obviously in the school committee, you see it in the last few years. But each year in September and October, we have teachers come in and showcase the great work they did over the summer through the R and D. So that's, they're used to this model. What's going to be different is, is whether or not we have to look at a hybrid model going into September, October. And again, much like our budget, we just don't, we just don't know. So we're, we're kind of waiting and we're planning behind the scenes on what we anticipate may happen. And Christine Power in the leadership team, we're working on that. But we don't want to put too much energy in one direction and then the state tell us we have to do something different, so.
I will say, one of the, one of the, I will say, and this is probably more to what Jen and this other person were referring to. I said, one of the beneficial outcomes that has been in this process has been the sharing and delivery of curriculum, curriculum and expected outcomes to parents to help support that learning at home. And that's definitely something that, you know, will continue to grow as we go into the fall. And I know that we've had those conversations in the past. And obviously, that's something that, that will be one of the beneficial outcomes of this is better information to going home to help support that process, continue the process of learning after, you know, they come home to us at home.
All right. Thank you. So John Dunn, "I was wondering where the salary numbers for the reduction of positions came from? Are they an average or based on people who were in line to accept positions? For example, the .8 math was for 66,000, but the candidate that is suggested for the hire would only cost around 43 to 45." John Dunn.
Michael, you want to take that? You want me to take it?
No, I can take that. So we budget for a master's, I believe it's Master's 15, Step Six. So when you are doing reductions, you can't do a reduction on what you're going to assume a person is going to be paid at. You're going to have to do a reduction on what the actual budget is. For example, if there are other hires that are on this list that were hired at a higher rate than what we budgeted. So we can't just assume that that person has a position. We have to assume that the budget is what we actually budgeted. And that's what the decrease needs to be on, not what the higher, not what the higher is. So in a situation where we are today, if the person is not a current employee of Medfield, we go by the budget.
Understood, thank you. Doug Pollard, "When does the union step in to support the cuts from, from their end salary freeze? Do you want to explain how that works?"
I mean, that's all negotiated, negotiated, right? I mean, that's all, that's all issues that are in two, three, four, five, and six. So we really can't, can't talk about it.
Right, no, but the process of how it would work if, if, if anything happened.
I still think that that goes within that too.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Zoe Pollard, "Many AP classes can, can be taken online through the virtual high school. As a student who was, who was forced to take an online AP class because it was not offered but necessary for my college major, these classes are available. Please consider that teachers who teach only AP classes can be substituted for the same online, online learning I had." All right. Catherine Muntz, "Can you clarify why we have three gym teachers at Blake? Is this a state requirement?"
So we have three wellness teachers at Blake based on enrollment. And they not only do physical education, but they also do health class as well. Just, just based on enrollment in, in classes.
Um, another one from Doug, what is the final date this budget will be finalized? Cuts, adjustments, I'm aware that the one point two has been, has been approved. Um, does this date coincide with the June fifteenth announcement?
Well, you guys haven't approved the one point two yet.
Haven't.
No.
So, uh, but if you want to know a little bit about the, the timeline, the town has uh, the town has scheduled a uh, town meeting for June twenty-seventh, which obviously is much later than ordinary, um, than ordinarily would be because of the COVID emergency. The, they have to be able to settle on a warrant amount, an amount that they are going to uh, bring to town meeting. And, you know, to some extent, while we need to, for the stability of the town and for their ability to kind of manage finances and to be able to bring that to town meeting responsibly and in a timely way. You know, the one point two number is most likely what it will be. We will continue to really figure out and wrestle with how we make these cuts. And that can happen, Jeff, please forgive me if I'm wrong, but that can happen depending on what line item and what kind of uh, area that's in. We can always adjust, uh, but really, we want to make sure that we know what it is that we're spending to the best of our ability, to the best of the ability that we can predict for the future by the beginning of the fiscal year, because that's just responsible. We can always be flexible within.
I mean, I think you got it. To be honest with you, I think you have to get this done by the end of next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what it goes.
I mean, that's the best thing to do. That's the best practices. That's the best thing that's, that it's the thing that's best for kids and for staff and for planning.
Jess, I think one of the things that people might be asking for in this case is priorities and buybacks, right? And in two thousand eight, uh, when I was in Sharon, we had the, you know, we had a standard list of all the cuts and uh, growing list as funding came in, it moved down the line off of the prioritized list what those buybacks would look like. And that prioritization, I think, is what Dr. Marston has asked us to do uh, in some sense of priorities. And I think that is based on, you know, and it's warranted through the conversations of um, you know, the tradition of the town and the schools, uh, the core values of what's important for, you know, for instruction for kids uh, and what the kids um, needs are, uh, the best provided education we can get out of the budget that we were given and the funds that become available as it, the budget starts to unfold. Right after, right after, right after we voted, right?
So any other issue and risk to this is that uh, you know, we have, the town has been very conservative about saying that ten percent is the number that they would like us to cut because um, but it's possible that revenue could end up going down from there.
Sure is.
That's why it's the most important for us to have our priorities straight. Because if, God forbid, we have to cut again at some point during the year, we have to also know what that is. My hope is that is that the state and the federal government will be able to come through with those revenue replacements that are so important to keep towns like ours and frankly, anywhere floating through real disasters like this, but we may not get that. Um, and so we always have to expect, expect expect things to get worse, but just hope for the best.
Jess, I also want to echo, you know, one of the concerns that Jeff brought up last night, and I think that, you know, I've been um, resonant, it's been resonating with me is to the continuity of programming, not just for this year, but the following year as well. So um, you know, the, the other options that were on this list and other things that we'll, we'll have to talk about in executive session, you know, we have to take in consideration, like, you know, maybe we, we buy ourselves one year for some, some program only to have it go away again next year. Um, if that happens to be the situation we're going to be in. So um, that's again, focusing on those core values and what's important to us around, you know, getting the services to students is extremely important and the decision-making that we're engaged in here. Uh, with all of your concerns, uh, you know, that I'm seeing on this list and obviously the emails uh, taken as part of that equation. So, um, and I guess I just want to echo everyone's feelings that um, that we're seeing on this particular list.
And Leo, I just wanted to, to jump in here too and say, because I've seen a lot of the questions come across that people are pointing out um, the things that we're legally not allowed to discuss in an open meeting, the two through six. Uh, because we can't discuss it doesn't mean that we're not acknowledging it and we just the, all the cuts aren't necessarily the ones that you all see, you know, so there's a lot of work to be done. And it's going to be done thoughtfully. And um, I just wanted to make sure that they, the people listening knew that we were acknowledging that.
That's one of the reasons that we've devoted to, essentially two evenings to this. I mean, this was, this last percentage of budget cuts is something that we've had to do quite quickly. Because there is this, you know, ever-changing situation. And um, we, we've wanted to make sure that, that the town knows exactly that we do value your input and that we won't be able to make everyone happy or even satisfied. But that we hear you and then we're not just going to go off and kind of unilaterally say, this is just the way this is going to go. We want your input. And I don't think we've ever done a workshop for, certainly not with a hundred and seventy-eight participants the way that we did one last night in that, in that context. So take that as it is and take it that I am so glad that we're able to have these conversations, even if they're hard. Because um, because you are also the stakeholders and you, you are going to have to, to help us manage this over the long term.
Uh, yeah, just reiterating that none of this is done in secrecy at all. It's the law that we have to follow. Um, but in terms of other decisions, we need to be doing it mindfully of everyone listening and understanding where they're coming from.
Let's see, we've got some more questions and then we can have a, a, a deeper dive.
Or maybe a seventh inning stretch.
Um, thank you, everyone, for hanging in there. Doug Pollard, why are there significant increases in salaries across the schools? Director of Curriculum Office, um, salary forty-three K over last year. Middle school, high school, intramural salary increase sixty K over last year. IT tech infrastructure increase of eighty K over last year. Are you, are you stating one point two cut, the service being provided will deteriorate?
Michael, you want to address?
There's some of these we can talk about, some that we can't.
Yeah, let Michael.
I, I can address all of these. So the director, the director curriculum office, we did not have a director of curriculum last year. So that, if you recall, that position was um, a
Part-time.
A part-time retired superintendent for that position. Um, so that's that, that first question.
That was Dr. Mardest last year.
Filling in uh, for one year. Um, second question, middle school and high school interim salary increase sixty, that was negotiated by the, by the um, bargaining unit with the uh, unit A. Um, so that was a contractual obligation that the school committee had because that was bargained in the last contract. Um, the IT infrastructure increase of um, eighty K. Um, that's one of our cuts that we have made this year. Um, so i- if you're looking at from uh, this year to next year where the cuts are coming from, um, that's an infrastructure cut that uh, if you recall, the town had us put it into capital and then we had to take it out of capital, which is one of the, which you guys are considering uh, tonight.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Just quickly for Ellen Tubman's um, question. My question was not, what are the thirteen? My question was which of the thirteen are being recommended? So, under the green, maybe Leo, you want to put your cursor around to, to point out to Ellen? Now that was recommended um, by Dr. Marsden, not by.
One, seven, eight, nine, and ten.
Correct. Okay. Um, this budget will be finalized before um, June fifteenth government announcement?
Oh, meaning for um, the, the COVID uh, kind of reentry?
Yeah, that's the goal.
Yeah.
Certainly, I think even if it wasn't about the COVID reentry, uh, we would want it to have this answered sooner rather than later.
Okay. Um, another question, is there a concern of teachers not returning without cuts? For example, health concerns, state requirements?
Yeah, that's a concern that we've been talking about and certainly uh, there's been a lot of guidance on that and how we address that as a school district and as a state, but that's certainly in the conversation.
Great. Um, Bonnie Ren Burgess, how many attendees yesterday and today?
I saw the peak today at two oh four.
Yeah. Yesterday was around one seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so very well attended. So thank you. Um, Zoe Pollard, correct me if I'm wrong, but tenure is supposed to protect teachers from budget cuts, salary cuts, harassment from school board committees, the public, et cetera. Tenure is supposed to be offered to teachers who uphold the Medfield School's mission statement. If I may remind you, the Medfield School system will create a dynamic collegial learning environment. Curriculum and instruction will guide students to achieve high standards and to meet the challenge of change. Through school, family, and community partnership, students will be prepared to become responsible, sensitive, contributing citizens and lifelong learners. As a recent grad, I have learned more in my music, business, wellness, and English electives than I have in any math or history class ever. How can you expect students to truly live your mission statement that will learn from their elective classes if they are cut?
You know, Zoe, I hear you. This is, this is really awful. And you're right. The things that fascinate us are the things that, that make us learn more, that help us make connections and that interest us, help us kind of learn all of the rest of the things. We're just in a really bad place right now and we're considering every option. And I appreciate your independence and your well-spokenness. I truly do.
Yes, thank you, Zoe.
Trying to figure out if well-spokenness is an actual word. Clearly better at that than I would be.
I know, this is painful and I, I, I feel her, I feel her rage right now and, and, and a lot of the rage and um, uncertainty. So um, this is not decided lightly. I just hope that is clear. Um, Catherine Muntz, please clarify, are the three fit as teachers a requirement for safety or is it nice to have? I know this is a difficult topic, but would like to understand since other areas are being impacted percentage-wise more aggressively.
I mean, I think it's, we, we have that as part of our curriculum, both wellness and physical education. And based on the number of students in the schedule, that's the staff members that we need.
Suzanne, if you could please um, enter in your last name somewhere, that would be wonderful. Um, Kristen Martin, um, do Medfield teachers still have tenure versus professional status?
No, it's called professional teacher status. No one in the state of Massachusetts has tenure anymore. There's non-PTS and there's PTS, so non-professional status teachers and professional status teachers. In order for a teacher to attain professional status, they need to have three successful uh, years teaching in the district. So if, even if you've been teaching somewhere else for five years and moved to another district, you need three more years uh, of successful and you attain professional teacher status on the first day of your fourth year.
And Andrea Sullivan, I think we just answered that question. Um, can you clarify whether three gym wellness teachers based on enrollment or state requirement are nice to have? I think we just did that one with uh, Kristen Muntz's question and um, Suz, oh, I'm waiting for Suzanne. Um, Jim Muntz, is the gap in revenue coming from the state? Also, is there a way to do job sharing to avoid full staff reduction given that some of next year may be remote? I feel like I'm paying for everything as usual.
Yeah, I mean, interesting concept, Jim. That's, you know, that's part of the conversation that we're having as far as um, I, I think Anna May or, or Leo had said it earlier, you know, if we, if we know we're going full remote, then this conversation is really different because certainly you don't have as many um, uh, onsite staff people that you would need if you're going full remote versus having real brick and mortar schools. So that's, you know, that's a conversation that, that we've, we've definitely had and will continue to look at. Um, I'm just trying to see the rest of his question. It's gone now, but what was it? Do you have the other part of it? Sorry.
It'll be in the, it'll be in the entered at the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
Um, a, a follow-up to Jim's question. Um, so if we, if we start a Kickstarter campaign, can we do that? It's sad in our community that we need to do that, but it would be cheaper than having to switch to private school options if the public school cannot maintain its competitive status.
So I can answer that question from Jim and I just found his other question. He had um, his, his first part of his question, is the gap in revenue coming from the state? So it's really coming from two places. So prior to COVID nineteen, uh, there's a structural deficit right now in the town of Medfield in terms, in terms of their budget. So uh, we were asked to cut a million dollars prior to COVID nineteen. Uh, and then once COVID nineteen hit, that's when the state aid reduction uh, part comes in. So we, we typically get about six million dollars a year uh, give or take from the state in chapter seventy money. So that ten percent cut equals six hundred thousand. So that's what we were talking about earlier. Um, if, if the state comes through in, in July or August and fully funds, level funds, uh, chapter seventy from FY twenty, uh, then we'll be in decent shape because we'll get an additional six hundred thousand dollars into our budget. But conversely, as, as I think Jess had mentioned earlier, if the budget comes out in July or August and now it's a twenty percent reduction, then we lose an additional six hundred thousand. So even though the school committee will vote the number tonight and we'll still do all these um, different workshops and, and executive sessions and everything in the next, you know, week or so, there still could be a situation in August where we're at this added again and we're reducing our budget by X amount again. So that, that's the part that is frustrating for all of us. Um, and it's the, the great unknown at this point. And we, we typically have our budget set in May and we know exactly where we are in June and we prepare for it all summer. It's just not going to be that same way now. So that's, it, it's really twofold. It's a structural, it's in the town, but it's also uh, a reduction of revenue from the state.
And, and I want you to know that our representatives are not only aware of, of how frustrating this is for us. It's incredibly frustrating for them. I mean, Denise Garlick is on the, the Ways and Means Committee and she continues to negotiate and it's just uh, at this point, the state is experiencing such a change in their predicted revenues. And that's the other thing about this is that it really is. It's really about whether you can tell the future or not. And I don't know if you met, noticed it, but there, we were just all thrown off our wheels in, in mid-March. You know, I mean, I, I think that my experience of closing down our schools was on Tuesday, people were saying, oh, we might close school. And I'm like, nah, we're not going to close school. And by Thursday afternoon, that school committee meeting, we were really thinking, okay, how are we going to do this? You know, things flipped in forty-eight hours. And when you are a, and that's tough enough for a state, for a school committee, for a school system. When you are looking at that as a full state and what that impact is on your revenue. I mean, Denise has uh, said, we literally just had to scrap everything that we did for the first part of the year to develop the, the budget and start completely from the beginning. So I think everybody is frustrated and nobody knows exactly what's going to happen. And that there is a real impact at the federal level as well. A lot of the funding, I mean, I think, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but the full kind of grant that we got from the CARES Act was twenty thousand dollars?
Yes, we got the minimum.
Right, we got the minimum and yet charter schools got fourteen million?
Fourteen million, we calculated, yes. Charter schools got fourteen million. So it, it was
So there's.
The problem with that is that the, the mechanism that they use for distribution of those funds was Title One. And we don't have, um, we, we haven't gotten Title One in the last two years. And that's just based on uh, local socioeconomic uh, indicator. So it's been, as soon as they said that was the mechanism of dispersal, I knew we were in trouble. So the minimum, Westwood got twenty thousand and we got twenty thousand. We both got the minimum.
Yeah, so, so a lot of these kind of like riding in cavalry kinds of grants or ideas about, you know, how this is going to go and it's going to get better that way. Those have yet to be. those have yet to be almost even conceived, let alone actualized.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a world of having to just sit with your own ambiguity and being able to sit with your anxiety around that. And it's hard. It's really difficult.
Zoe asked me about Ally Tierney's email. As I stated at the beginning, I got at least eight emails, exactly eight, as I last checked at 4:30, from students. And that's why I invited Wyatt to represent the students and read his statement. But I will happily read Ally's email. And hello, my name is Ally Tierney, and I am writing on behalf of Mrs. Pollard. I would like to share a few words about my experience in Mrs. Pollard's class. I have had the privilege of having her as a teacher since my freshman year, and there is no other way I would have wanted to spend my time. I took culinary arts, international cuisine, and child development, and each one offered a new array of lessons. While history and math are important, I believe learning how to make a healthy meal, learning about motherhood, and creating bonds for life with teachers and classmates are valuable in the education process as they teach real life skills and prepare for the future. Mrs. Pollard is an amazing teacher who deserves to be in the school all the time. She greets everyone with a huge smile and accepts everyone for who they are. There was never a dull moment, and she was, she is always up for a hug or to just be there for you on a tough day. When I think of Medfield teachers and their kindness, she is the one of the first ones to come to mind, and she would not, and she should not be on the budget cut. Thank you for your time, Ally Tierney. Thank you very much, Ally. Again, I feel everybody's pain, and I love you. I love Mrs. Pollard. My son loves her. So I get this, really, I do.
Anna May, I was blown away by the outpour of people in support of Ms. Pollard. It was, and not, and not being so familiar with the secondary schools, I would say one of the common threads is her big smile and the hugs. I thought that was very common.
No, and I've spoken to Stephanie, and you know, she radiates from within when you ask her about her, what she does and her students, so there's no doubt.
One comment, the letters from the students too, it's so well spoken. You know, a few of them referenced, I know I'm about their voice. It's great to hear them say that voice.
Absolutely. And Julia said, thank you, Zoe. I agree 100% with your statement. Life skills and enrichment classes should not be the first to go. And then Zoe Pollard says, I believe Mrs. Bonnie Ren Burgess can speak more to this, but professional status or basically tenure is meant to protect teachers. How are planning on demoting non-professional teachers because of professional status? As that would be part of the union code? And then we've got more questions. Kelly Wysocki, sorry if this question has been asked and answered, but what is the budget for the school buses? Would it be possible to go to pay for youth service? It is not a recommendation, so I'm sure there is a reason. Either it's not enough, or the community would not want the change. Who wants to?
Kelly.
Oh, Kelly. I've been dying.
So we have had some very throaty debates about this over a couple of years. And I think we continue to go round and round. And if I can be neutral on the discussion, a lot of the considerations are the number of kids we bus, why we bus, and the number of schools that we have. And so when we're thinking about whether we can charge a bus fee or not, apply it fairly, apply it at all, and how that happens, I think over the years, we do continue to wrestle with this. And I'm not saying that it's ever out of the question, but it's definitely a tough one. And we have come up with numbers around this. And in fact, Kelly, if you, if you want me to, I can go back and look.
Yeah, I mean, we had those numbers right from last year.
Right here? Okay, so I can, I'll send you a link around kind of the last discussion we had about that and what those, those numbers were. Because we have, we have thought about that and thought about it, and Anna May knows I'm being so good about not giving my opinion. But we can, you can watch the tape.
I know. But it's a fair question. Because
It is a significant debate that we have had, that for a bunch of low minded people, this seems to be the one thing that tends to really put us into a couple of different camps. So it's always fun.
Yeah. Jenny, I hope I'm pronouncing your last name right. Is it Kinnear, Kein? What about busing, other charged towns for buses? Okay, so we've, I'm sure it's unpopular, but I'd rather pay a $300 fee for bus, to bus my kids to shift funds to save a teacher being cut.
I mean, I think the other issue around the bus that we've talked about too is, is the structure of our schools. So typically, you see many communities have neighborhood schools, so it's a lot easier to do the busing because it's based on the mileage from the home. So people that live at a certain mileage, one and a half miles in, so if you are closer than 1.5 miles, or, now is it two, Michael, or 1.5? I always get, always forget which one it is. Either way, those folks would pay a fee, but we need to bus the ones beyond that. So that's, you can charge all kids seven through 12, but you're required to bus all kids K to six within that one and a half or two miles. So you have to charge elementary kids that live within that. And you may be in a situation where you're paying, depending on where you live, you're paying for your child to attend memorial at bus fee, but not on WeLock and vice versa. So it gets a lot more complicated in our structure because we have the three elementary schools where we go. Each kid goes to every, every school where lots of districts have the neighborhood, and it's much easier to implement. The other piece is, is that regional school districts cannot, cannot do that. So regional school districts like Dover Sherwin, like King Philip, they cannot do bus fees because they get reimbursement for transportation. That was the carrot and the stick that they did many, many years ago to get towns to go together, regionalize. So that regional reimbursement for transportation disallows them from charging a fee. But other than, I think, Medway and maybe Millis, everyone else charges a bus fee in our area.
Alrighty.
So let's move on.
But those are good conversations to have again.
Yes.
So in terms of, so we have to vote on this number, essentially, for the 1.2 cuts. But before we, we vote, I'm, I'd like to hear from school committee members on their, on their thoughts regarding now that we've, we've listened, we've read emails. People have been passionate about lots of things here tonight. So any statements from school committee members?
Megan, do you want to, do you want to talk as part of the subcommittee? Or do you want me to kind of just?
Well, I mean, I, I think I said a lot of what I wanted to say last night at the workshops. So if there were people that are here tonight that did not hear it last night, just saying, being in on the process, or as much as we were in on the process since the beginning, Jess and I, just how truly difficult it is to formulate a balanced budget in the first place, and then end up getting hit with a pandemic in the middle of it, and now being forced to make really difficult decisions, not knowing what the future holds. So it's like, as we said yesterday, budgeting in the dark, essentially. And I'm very pleased that so many people came and so many people shared. And, and I want to make sure everyone knows that these are decisions and, and actually, some of their ideas are things that we're talking about. And just that we're being mindful of all of this, and it's not, we're looking at all options, basically. It's hard.
My thought about this is a purely practical, a purely practical point is that it is best for the town in terms of its stability, its ability to budget, its ability to, and, and our obligation to be stewards of our taxpayers' money in the most responsible way that we can, to vote on the number tonight. But I am not yet comfortable with voting or approving all of the recommended cuts. I really do think that we need to have additional conversations within executive session and take that time to explore our options and to really make sure that we are always, which I have never doubted, but I, it's always best to check ourselves, really make sure that we are doing a student forward budget in terms of our line items. So I would probably, as a subcommittee member, and, or I would, as a subcommittee member and as a school committee member, recommend to my cohorts that, that you do accept the 1.2 cut and vote on the full amended budget amount for the stability of, of the town and for the predictability of expenses for our townspeople at this point. And it's not great. It's not great. There are a lot of things that are not great right now. And I, and I would ask that anyone here, just remember, this is not normal. None of this is normal, and we cannot allow it to become the new normal. We have to constantly fight against that impulse to settle into what our world has become because that is not okay for us and is not okay for our kids. We can be flexible. We can show them resilience, but we cannot accept this as a normal life or a normal world. So that would be my input. Anyone?
Marlia?
Yeah, I can echo, I can echo that, you know, that we can vote on this. I'm going to recommend, Madam Chair, that we increase the frequency of our school committee meetings throughout the summer and into September in order to continue the conversation, as it surely will, the conversation will continue to pivot and move. And I know it's going to put a wrench in all of our vacation plans that we all have this summer, but I think obviously it's something we need to do.
And My vacation will be if I can get three people out of my house and I can stay here for just like
Well, you can all come and hop in my intake pool. So I, and I, I want to go right back to all the concerns, you know, all the passion we heard tonight, heard loud and clear. This is, you know, this is the hardest thing I've had to do from this perspective. I've been on the other side and watching the cuts, myself included, being included in those cuts. And it is nerve wracking. And, and please know that from a budgetary perspective, we're working as hard to maintain as much of the programming as possible. You know, obviously, we are here because of the, the schools and the people of this community. And, and it's those core values that brought us here that we would seek to maintain, you know. Every, and I'm getting a lot of feedback, obviously. So we're going to maintain those, you know, those core values for things like class size, breadth of programming. It'd be great to keep the breadth of programming with the current great people we have already conducting that programming. So that's why we're, we are not done tonight. After the conclusion of this meeting, we're heading in to continue to try other avenues. And again, it's, it's really a moving target. I spoke with Representative Garlick yesterday, who reminded me that the state is going to, probably going to vote a 112 budget for July, which means they're going to be voting month to month. And so that keeps us all in the same boat.
Yeah. As a town, we've narrowly avoided that. I mean, I think we are really making efforts but to, to make sure that that doesn't happen for us.
So I guess I echo what Jess is saying. I will vote for the accepted amount that we get to work with. But we will fight to restore and maintain as much as we can.
I've watched the team fight as hard as it can. So we don't have to deal with the number that we have. The number we have to report, the sooner we accept the number that we're dealing with, we begin to start thinking about now. I think the scenarios that Michael and the whole team have put together, great starting point. We have to do more work there. I love it, being back in the past, in my own head. That, that one recommendation is just one recommendation. I, I was willing, I, I, number, I want to accept the scenarios. Very well in the beginning. I just keep thinking, flex, if it's new. How do we, how do we do that? If you buy another year, we probably have to lease a lot more knowledge.
Yeah, I'm getting some comments on the thread here that I'm having difficulty hearing you.
Are you having difficulty?
Yeah. Like faded in and out.
Now he is completely mute.
Yeah, I'll switch over, I'll switch over.
Thank you. So I just want to say a couple of things regarding the recommended cuts. I, I'm very hesitant to support the, the recommended cuts that are listed here. My concerns are that if we make some of these cuts, they're going to be very hard to reclaim down the road. And, and if we're looking at, I think that the first guiding principle of last night's workshop was, you know, to minimize the impact of our students. I think maintaining our staff is important. And I, and I truly hope that we can figure something out and be creative so that we can maintain that. And, and, and also, we don't want to lose good people, you know? And we have them, and we want them, and I hope we can fight to keep them. So, you know, I
Largely, the positions that are, that we are looking at right now are positions that we would have to fill. Right? I mean, obviously
But I think last night, Jeff, Jeff, I got that. So Jeff last night said that they identified some really qualified people. So if we do let them go, then they're going to seek elsewhere. Fair enough, they need a job, right? So if we have identified qualified people now, I would really love to keep those qualified people. So that's, that's what I'm getting at.
Great. Thanks for the clarification. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I'm back on proper audio, but that, that's where I was going as well. I mean, that's where I thought, I, I think it was whoever said, let's do this over two nights. You know, I was thinking about it a lot, but that's where I've gone is, some of those people that you may, you know, depending, we have to make decisions. But someone retires, there may be others who are coming in here, and they're really excited. Right? And it's a new, it's going to be a different world in September. So I, you know, that, that's where I am. The scenarios, it's, it's great that we have a menu to start with. I'm, you know, I look at what was presented last night and I say, we need to discuss that more. And we, you know, we can't have all those discussions in an open forum for, for, you know, because of the laws. But I'm, that, that, you know, I mean, I went into this meeting saying, we need to discuss that part more. You know, which, which is the menu, which I'm, I'm committed to that. But I, I think we need to go forward with the number that the finance committee, subcommittee has worked so hard to try to make it as best it can. You know, and Jeff, I've watched you guys. So we need to move forward, is my view.
Right. Jess, you're muted.
And I want to really hand it to Dr. Marston and to Michael because they have literally been wrestling with this. And I am not sure either one of them, well, except for the part where Michael was out on medical leave for a period of time and was still working, even though we told him to go home for this whole winter, just trying to figure this out. I mean, budget season in general is hard. Budget season with a virus is like, it's like a disaster film of accounting and public administration. Not to mention a disaster film for the rest of us, but it's, it's doubly as difficult. And, and I do have to tell you how much I appreciate it, how much I always learn through every budget season, no matter how crazy it is, from the two of you. And I really And I really appreciate it. I, I constantly feel like my, my baseline knowledge is, is expanded. You know, just enough to be dangerous sometimes, but, um, I do appreciate, I appreciate it. And I, and I think you come to us as, as teachers too, a lot of the time. I feel that way where you're not simply telling us this is how it goes, but you are also so willing to explain it and make it clear. And the other thing I would like to do is, uh, maybe we could ask Andrew it, what this experience tonight has been like for him and what he has heard. Sorry, Andrew, I'm putting you on the spot, but just before we take a vote on that number, I'd be really interested to hear what, um.
Yeah, that's okay. Don't worry about it. Yeah, I think like, it's obviously a hard decision, especially like, I know specifically Mrs. Pollard has been very vocal about, um, budget cuts to her program. But I think that, um, this is hard for everyone and it's not just her, the people who are being vocal about it. So, um, I think that you guys are doing a great job, that like, you're being very careful and diligent about making decisions about this. Um, definitely learned more about budgeting in this sitting than I have, um, in any other situation in my life. But, yeah, so.
Thank you, Andrew. And I take your.
You're the future accountant, Andrew, or what?
I don't think so, but.
Andrew, I take, I take your comments to heart, you know, regarding that writing lab. And I know how important it is and, you know, especially for the seniors next year. It, it is, it's a huge piece of your year and, um, we get that for sure. So thank you. Um, so at this point, I think, uh, we need to vote on that 1.2 cut and then.
Do we need to vote on an actual amount?
I believe so.
You have to vote on actual amounts when new, as you did at the, at the, uh, public hearing, which, you know, I know we only have 162 people left on there, but, you know, when this is all said and done, we have this fun all over again next year and I really.
Next week.
Encourage, encourage people next year when we're going through this process, uh, of course, next week. But I mean, um, the public hearing this year, we have, we advertised the public hearing and didn't have, um, a lot of folks here this year. So I, I really want to encourage people to get involved early. Uh, we do that initial budget presentation in December, uh, right before the holiday and, and the vacation. And then, uh, we do a public hearing, which, um, you know, is, is sometimes attended by a lot and sometimes not, uh, at the end of January. So I would encourage people to really get involved in that process next year. Um, and, and I love that people are involved in it now, but you can get in even sooner because the fun usually starts in November and December. So just want to say that. The note, the budget number I have, Madam Chair, uh, is 36,877,290.
Do we have a motion to approve, um, the budget for 36,877,290?
So moved.
Do, uh, so moved by Jess Riley. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Megan Glenn. Um, we will take a roll call vote. Jessica Riley?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Leo Brem?
I'm thinking, hold on. I guess I.
Tim Knight? Tim Knight?
I'm thinking too.
Tim? I think his is a Wi-Fi issue.
I have my phone out there. Um, aye. Yes.
Anna May O'Shea Brook, aye. The, the motion passes. Thank you and thank you Jessica Riley and Megan Glenn for serving on the budget subcommittee this year. I know that wasn't easy as well. So thank you too as well.
Megan hung in, in a way that I, I, in my first year on the budget committee, I would have been like, oh, God, this is the worst thing I've ever done. And now I'm a little bit more.
It wasn't.
She hung in very well and organized me sometimes in a way that's helpful.
Okay.
Okay. And thank you, everyone who hung in there with us. Um, so future agenda items, FY21 budget conversation continues. Dale Street project, challenge success, student feedback, social emotional learning, educational stability policy review, standard-based report card feedback. Our next meeting is on June 18th.
That we are aware of.
Yeah, the, the next meeting I think is, is, is the regular meeting, but I assume that we'll be doing some postings for next week, uh, for either executive and open or just executive session.
Great. So, um, shall we have any closing statements before we move into executive session? And we won't be going back into the open meeting.
Um, you know, I did notice that, uh, Jim Muntz had asked a couple of times. So I wanted to just, uh, make sure that, um, that his, his question is answered in terms of a Kickstarter. I think that that's, um, I think, uh, Kickstarters and fundraising are frequently done for very specific, uh, very specific kind of items, but they are not generally used for general school funding. And probably I have to say that, um, having been on the MCPE and I know many of us have done PTO work and everything else. They are, they are the organizations that allow us to have the special, uh, programming to innovate, to fill in where we really need to fill in those things. So if you are looking to, um, and we basically pay to keep the lights on and salary and to develop programming and do the best that we can in that way, student-focused. But the MCPE and the PTO are going to need your help so much this year because we will be talking to them and we'll be talking to them a lot. And if anybody is looking, uh, to, to contact them around how they might be able to help them, um, I'd be very happy to give you, uh, names and numbers after this. Okay, thanks, Jim. Sorry, we didn't see that just before that. Is that, uh, do you guys have any other idea around that?
All right. Um, any closing statements before we go into executive session? Um, actually, let's start with, um, Andrew, anything you'd like to, to say this evening?
Nothing. Just to follow up on one thing that we talked about last meeting or two minutes ago, I guess now, was the senior farewell video, um, which ended up being pretty successful. I haven't checked recently how many views it's gotten, but we have over a thousand views on the farewell video. So it was nice. It was about a little over 20 minutes long. That's kind of an update, um, on the student council side of things.
Beautiful. And how are you guys hanging in there?
Um, we're actually pretty ahead of schedule so far. We're already, um, planning for pep rally, um, willing that it happens. So, yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
A popper rally, pep rally. Yeah.
Uh, how about, uh, Megan? Anything, closing statements?
I guess the, that this is not the end conversation. We will still be sharing and talking. And there's a lot of more work to be done and discussions to be had.
Beautiful. Tim?
Uh, two comments. One, and Jess, you, you, you kicked it off, but I, you know, last year I noticed, think, you know, organizations like MCPE, we're, we're going to need that. We're, we're going to continue to need that. I mean, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about that, but, um, hopefully that'll, we'll continue to have some funds there. Um, but landing on a positive, I heard a pep rally. And if, um, the unthinkable happens and you can't do it at school, the, the rolling rally you guys ran on Sunday was, um, amazing. I mean, it was so far beyond my expectations and I think the only fear is, I, I heard a few people say, um, can we do that instead of graduation? So I, I don't know. But that, the rolling rally was fantastic and I, I'd like to end at least on a positive there.
Fabulous. Leo?
Um, I'd just say, uh, I think I said a lot before, but I will, uh, plug that, uh, you know, we will have those listening sessions, um, in the coming weeks. And so please look forward to, uh, look for those notifications, um, teachers and parents, please. Um, and students for that matter. Uh, I think it's important to hear from everybody. Um, I'm sure my children have some opinions about this e-learning situation they'd like to share. So, um, uh, but yes, please listen for that because I think it's going to be important as the budget was one half of our problem. And going back in September could be another one. So, um, I just hope it's better than, I hope it's better than we expect. So.
Jess, do you have anything else to say? Are you cool?
Me or Jess?
Now my master plan, uh, visioning session on Sunday. And that's, and we always think about like, what's happening now? We need to think about the next 20 years or this is going to continue to happen. So that's really important. And, um, town meeting is going to be a little different this year and it's going to be outside and it's going to be socially distant and it's probably going to be on the turf. And we still meet people there because we have to, this is, this is our governmental structure in Medfield. And if you don't participate, then the people who feel as though they have one agenda only or the loudest voice are the ones who, who control your future. And that is their right because they have shown up. So in a time where we're always asked not to show up right now, I'm going to ask you to try to show up for that. And that will be on June 27th unless it rains and then it's on the 29th. And I hope that the town advertises it well. That's all I have to say.
Alrighty, and Jeff?
So could I just, I just wanted to, um, talk a little bit about the roll-in rally and thank so many people that were a part of that. Um, I, I have to say in, in 28 years in education, that's, that's one of my top three events I've ever been a part of. Um, I just really thought it was well-done, organized by the parent volunteers. Uh, we, we could not have had, you know, more support from the town, uh, in that. So that the police department, fire department, uh, DPW, parks and rec. I mean, everything was, was just one big collaborative effort to support our kids. And I just, I just felt like it was just a wonderful, wonderful experience. And, and so many of our teachers came out on a Sunday to support, support the kids. And whether it was an elementary teacher or a high school teacher, um, just really appreciate the extra effort they did to come and support the kids. And I, it's been a long time since I've seen that many smiles on kids' faces. So it's great.
Yeah, it was absolutely uplifting and joyous. You saw it in the seniors, but you also saw it in, in the, in the townspeople. So it was much needed and much appreciated. Um, so I think those, the, the parent volunteers that spearheaded that, um, Kim Price and Janie Steele, who rallied, you know, ANGP resources to embrace that as well. So, and all the volunteers to make the town extra fabulous. So thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, on that.
Just to say, just Ma, Ma, Ma and Chris Daly, Ma Colletti and Chris Daly, we met, you know, every single week for, you know, a month and a half up to that. And it was really their, their idea and they just ran with it and did a wonderful job. I know they had other folks help them out too, but I can't say enough about their dedication and their commitment to our kids. So thank you again.
Absolutely. Um, alrighty, folks. So, um, we are going to move into executive session to, and not return, as I said, um, to discuss COVID-19 issues related to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, Medfield's Teacher Association, school secretaries, custodians and cafeteria workers. And the second reason is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, superintendent, director of finance and operations, director of instruction and innovation, director of student services, accounting specialist, out-of-district director, data manager, secretary of finance and operations, administrative assistant to the secretary, director of technology, network administrator, human resources assistant, payroll and human resource manager, director of facilities, high school principal, middle school principal, Dale Street principal, We洛克principal, Memorial principal, middle school assistant principal, high school assistant principal and director of food services. So I think I need to take a roll call vote to end this one and to go into executive session. So, um, Jess Riley?
Aye.
Leo Brem?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anna May O'Shea Brook, aye. And thank you to all who attended this virtual meeting and contributed to the dialogue. Thank you very much.
Continue to be here. My gosh, you stayed.
I know.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.